Hi, Jordy. I didn't know you were here. How are you? Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Former student. Former student.
He's the band.
Yep. Hope you're coming to see my pant- our pantaloons, you. Wow. Yeah.
We are. Hello, friends, welcome to, I'm calling to order, the Board of Education for the Celine Area Schools. Board of Education meeting on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, six thirty. Would you all please stand as you are able for the Pledge of Allegiance as sung by Brad Gerby.
Sung?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Treasurer Gerby. You were pretty close to singing it, I appreciate that. I'm going to pass this over for two items for superintendent's recognition.
Well, thank you, President McVeigh. I am honored tonight to introduce the twenty twenty-four Celine Boys Swim and Dive Team, led by Coach Todd Brunti. This team completed another very successful season representing Celine High School. The Hornets, led by Captains Ethan Bull, Drew Miller, Dennis Ozil, and Nick Twig, finished second at the MHSAA Swimming and Diving Finals on March ninth. This second-place finish continued this remarkable fifteen-year streak of finishing sixth place or higher at the MHSAA Finals. That's incredible. En route to this impressive accomplishment, several Hornets earned awards, including eight All-SEC, four Regional Diving Qualifiers, eighteen MHSAA State Qualifiers, eight MISCA All-State, and six NISC A All-American Awards. And Coach Brunti will have to go through the acronyms later on some of those. The team achieved all this through hard work, dedication, and commitment to each other, and a longstanding expectation to represent their families, peers, districts, and community to the best of their ability. Coach Brunti, come on up to the podium.
Yep. Well, thank, first, I'd like to say thank you to everybody for recognizing the team and our accomplishments, and we're very proud to represent the school district. Like I said, we, as a program, have a, I think, a responsibility and obligation to represent the community the best we can, and we strive to do that. We talk about it continuously, and we try to reach the level of performance that represents everybody in and out of the pool, and I'd just like to say thank you. There's so many people that are behind this, including all of you by recognizing us, and then also the, all the faculty at the high school, middle school principals who allow me to be there or go early or something because something's going on, and from Nick and Sandy and Community Ed for the pool, all the way down to my assistant coaches, Kara, Kara Smith. I had Alan Duski, who's been instrumental in helping me out and being able to keep coaching and teaching. He's taken a lot of the responsibility on in the mornings, which it's getting to be harder and harder to do, but most of all, the boys, their commitment to each other. They really did this year come together as a team and compete at its highest level. We were real close to winning it, but we are going to try and go back next year and try and get us another win at state championship, and hopefully be back here next year celebrating that or something very similar, because we're going to try and live up to our expectations. So, thank you very much.
That sounds great. Now, what we'd like to have is all the boys swim and dive teams start, everybody come up, and let's line up so that each one of you are going to introduce yourself at the podium. You would say your name, what year you are in school, and then what your events are. So, and so let's line up, line up behind Drew, and then let's just go and make sure that we all introduce yourselves, and then we're going to line up over by Coach Brunti for a picture with the Board of Education. Okay. Go ahead, Drew.
All right, I'll start. I'm Drew Miller, I'm a senior. I was captain of the swim and dive team, and my event is diving.
I'm Nick, I'm also a senior, and my, I swim butterfly in freestyle.
My name is Ethan Bull, I'm also a senior, and I swim backstroke and butterfly.
My name is Diego Valdez, I'm a junior, and I swim the hundred butterfly and two hundred IM.
I'm Isaac, I'm a freshman, I swim breaststroke, and I am.
I'm Joseph Rosales, I'm a freshman, and I, my event is diving.
I'm Eli, and my, I'm a sophomore, and my event is IM.
I'm Braylon, I'm a freshman, and I'm a freestyler.
I'm Jason, I'm a freestyler and flyer.
I'm Jack, I'm a sophomore, and I'm a freestyler.
Hi there, I'm Nathaniel, I'm a junior, and I'm a backstroker and freestyler.
I'm Dennis, I'm a senior and a captain on the swim team, and my main event is freestyle.
I'm Jonah, I'm a junior, and I'm a freestyler.
I'm Thomas, and I'm a freestyler.
Way to represent.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Okay, let's go to the.
I love it.
Okay, I'm just moving on to the next one. We're going to go right.
Okay.
Yeah, do you want to go ahead? We're going to go right to the next recognition, Superintendent Latch.
Okay, so I am proud to introduce Washtenaw United Team Number Four, led by Coach Adam Winters. This team set some very lofty goals at the start of the season, including a Tree Town Trophy Championship, a first-place finish in a showcase tournament, a bid for USA Hockey's High School Nationals, and ultimately, Division Two State Championship. Washtenaw United got off to a great start, going three and one in league play before the new year, with the only loss coming to Cranbrook, remember that name, in a game where our only goalie had to leave halfway through the game. Although the team came up short in January with its bid to win the showcase tournament and the bid for a spot at Nationals, Washtenaw United continued to play strong against D-two opponents going three and oh in January. At the end of January approached, as, as the end of January approached, the United would go through the toughest part of their schedule. The United faced four straight games against top-six D-one opponents, games against Grosspoint North, St. Mary's, and Liggett. Although somewhat lopsided losses left the team feeling good about their efforts. However, the United faced rivals Skyline Huron in the first game of the Tree Town Trophy, where a disappointing effort turned into a turning point for the team. Washtenaw United left the locker room understanding the level of play needed to be successful for the remainder of the season, and rallied for a six-three win over Pioneer, good for a second-place finish in the Tree Town Trophy Series. The United would finish their D-two schedule with a three-and-two record, and finish the regular season with two excellent performances against St. Mary's and the eventual D-one champion Grosspoint South. The team carried over their strong play at the end of the season into the playoffs, defeating Sacred Heart seven oh in first-round matchup. In the second round, the United would score five goals on the league's best defensive team to earn a five-one victory and a rematch in the championship game against second-place Cranbrook. Cranbrook had two of the three top scorers in the league, and the most goals, four, including a player with sixty-three goals. The team did a masterful, masterful job shutting down her and holding her to one goal in the team's five-one state championship victory. Along the way, here's some season highlights. The largest team in Washtenaw United's history with all players contributing, ten Celine Players, which is the largest contributing school, the most wins for a United team. Daphne Grant from Dexter led the team in goals with twenty-two, six in the playoffs, two in each game. Cecilia Henriksen from Chelsea led the team in points with thirty-six, including five goals and one assist. Cindy Clark led Celine Players with twelve goals, fourteen assists, including the game-winning goal in the final game. Celine Player Lily Schleck led all defenseman in offensive categories with eight goals, ten assists, for eighteen points. And goaltender Trista Tracy from Chelsea set a team record for wins, fourteen and seven shutouts. With that said, I'd like to invite Coach Adam Winters up to award the varsity letters that he has, and then we're going to also call up the entire team. Yep, so let's bring up the whole, the whole United team, come up and line up right over in here. Bring our whole team up.
A few thank yous before we get started. Just want to thank the, the board for hosting us, means a lot, your recognition to the team, and thank you very much, Dr. Latch and Athletic Director Mantha, for, for their work in recognizing these players for letters. This is the first time that we've been formally recognized with letters for this, for girls' hockey, so this is a big moment for, for the team, and greatly appreciated for all the work that's, that's happened behind the scenes. Quick, quick thank you, I've got two assistant coaches, three assistant coaches that are here tonight, Chad Clark, Steve McDowell, and Sue McDowell, who's here somewhere. There we go. So, their help this season's just so valuable to, to the team with their knowledge and allows me to coach, wouldn't be able to do it without them. And this team, this is an incredible group of young women, just the things they've accomplished this year, it was, it was a, a difficult start to the season, just getting kicked out kind of at the last minute from the ice cube, having to move out to Chelsea, not sure how that was going to play out, adding a twenty-minute drive one way to practice, you know, each time. Turns out, we got our own locker room there, we're now one of two, three teams in the state that have their own locker room for girls' hockey, so we're pretty proud about that. We did a, did a great job decorating it in, in our colors, so I think overall, the team's pretty happy to make that move. But I can't say enough about these, these young women, doing great academically, most are multi-sport athletes or involved in some other activity, we've got, I think, four lacrosse players, debate team, we've got, you know, all, the whole gamut, so these, these girls are great, dedicated students and athletes. So, congrats, guys. Let's give them a hand. All right. So, we got some letters to hand out, and I'm going to let you guys introduce yourselves. So, once you do that, I will give you your letter. We do have some players not from Celine, who will enter, just Julia, and we also have two players who, two players who earned their letters elsewhere, so with other sports already got them, so.
Hi, my name is Sidney Clark, I'm class of twenty twenty-five, and I play forward center.
Hi, I'm Chloe, I'm class of twenty twenty-four, and I play senior, or, I play center.
I'm Casey Honer, I'm class of twenty twenty-seven, and I play forward.
I'm Sam Wazisco, I'm a senior, and I play forward.
I'm Abby Schroeder, I'm class of twenty twenty-six, and I'm a defense.
I'm Kendra Wagner, I'm class of twenty twenty-five, and I'm a forward.
I'm Nora Stevenson, I'm a junior, and I play forward.
I'm Juliana Marini, I'm a junior, and I play forward.
I'm Lily Schalak, I'm a sophomore, and I play defense.
I'm Isabella Mack, I'm a junior, and I play winger.
My name is Julia Burkholz, I'm a senior, and my home school is Dexter, and I play defense.
Okay, we're going to go take a picture. Wait, hang on, Sue's.
Looks good. We'll just, we'll just pause for a second or two while people like calm down, catch their breaths, but DAR, you are on deck, because there is no public comment this evening, so we're going to go to one extended public comment. So, Denise Frost, you can come up and take the mic, and if it's green, you're good to, good to speak.
Well, first of all, thank you, President McVeigh, for granting me the opportunity to present our Celine High School Good Citizen Award at this board meeting, and to shed some light on the work of DAR. I'd also like to extend my gratitude to Principal Ms. Stager for her guidance on ensuring that the Good Citizen Award found its way to a deserving individual through the counseling staff. And before I go any further, I would like to introduce other DAR members that are joining me this evening. I have Lauren Smith, she's the Regent of the Sarah Casual Angel Chapter, which represents the membership of the Ann Arbor area, and she's also a parent alum of a Celine graduate. Sharon Clark is the Good Citizen Chair of our chapter. Myself, I'm a, oh, one other person, Martha Baylin is, does public relations and runs our website, and myself, I'm an historian, I'm a point person for Celine High School for DAR, and I'm also a parent of three alumni from the school. And Lauren is going to share what DAR is and what we do.
Thank you, Denise. The DAR is short for Daughters of the American Revolution. We are a service lineage-based organization for women who are descendants of individuals involved in the Revolutionary War. The DAR promotes historic preservation, education, and patriotism. Internationally, the DAR has over one hundred and ninety thousand members and more than three thousand chapters. We have a history of contributing to many memorials and events. For over a hundred years, the DAR has owned a block of real estate in Washington DC, including DAR Constitution Hall and Memorial Hall. After World War II, the DAR contributed to some reconstruction efforts in Europe. We've contributed over a half a million dollars to the construction of the World War II Memorial in Washington DC. Three-quarters of a million dollars was raised for the restoration efforts of the Statue of Liberty, as well as other memorials across the country. We support five DAR schools located in underserved communities. The genealogical research system is maintained by the DAR and is available for public research. The DAR Museum has a collection of over thirty thousand artifacts of historic nature, mostly Revolutionary War, some subsequent. Annually, the DAR Scholarship Committee awards over eleven hundred scholarships valued over one point four million dollars. For anyone taking notes, Scholarship Portal opens November first this year and closes January thirty-first. We have scholarships available not only to high school seniors, but college students, grad students, and medical students. Locally, our chapter has consistently supported veterans at the VA Hospital, the families of veterans at Fisher House, American Legion efforts, Vietnam Veterans Post Three Ten, they have an annual pig roast, we have fun helping support their fundraiser, and we participate in the Suicide Awareness Program. We have participated in Rees Across America and unaccompanied veteran service, services at Great Lakes National Cemetery and Holly. For the last several years, we've been in the Dexter Memorial Day Parade, where we distribute over one thousand flags annually. We collect monetary donations and for school supplies for underserved schools in our area. We promote flag and constitutional awareness and education. We have initiated a program to place markers and American Revolutionary Veterans Headstones located in Washtenaw County. Last fall, at Oakwood Cemetery here in Celine, we placed new plaques for two American Revolutionary veterans. Mayor Brian Morrow spoke among other dignitaries at this event. We recognize and honor accomplished seniors from local high schools with the Good Citizen Award. Sharon?
Good evening. The Good Citizen Award was created in nineteen thirty-four. It's a recognition program sponsored by the DAR to honor outstanding high school seniors who demonstrate qualities of good citizenship. These qualities are dependability, service, leadership, and patriotism. This award serves to encourage and recognize young people who are actively contributing to their communities and embodying the values of citizenship and service. Each participating high school selects one student per academic year to receive the DAR Good Citizen Award. Students are given the option of writing an essay, which is then judged by non-DAR members of the community. This is the way the chapter winner is chosen. The chapter winner is, the, the application of the chapter winner is then submitted to the state where another round of judging occurs. The state then submits that winner to the national DAR. Our chapter had a student not only from Celine this year, but also Ann Arbor Pioneer, Chelsea, Dexter, and Whitmore Lake. Just for the record and as a point of interest, Celine High School had a national winner in nineteen eighty-five, Liam Burgess-Lavery, maybe some of you know him. Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pleasure that we're able to recognize one of Celine High School's brightest stars. Erin Hoodman has truly demonstrated what it means to be a good citizen, and it is an honor to announce her as this year's recipient at our high school winner, as the high school winner here in Celine of the Good Citizen Award. Would Erin, along with her parents, Joe and Mary Allen, please join us up front. As a senior with eight days left in her high school journey, Erin's achievements are nothing short of remarkable. She has not only excelled academically, earning a place on the Gold Honor Roll, but she has also been inducted into the National Honor Society, where she has served as secretary. But Erin's commitment to service doesn't stop there. She has a part in the school, she has a part, been a part of the school community, which is evident through her roles as a contributing member of the Student Council. Erin has served as a class representative, a media executive, and a Student Council President during her senior year. Erin's involvement extends beyond academics and leadership roles. She has been an active participant, participant in various extracurricular activities as well. This includes the Celine High School Link Crew Leader, DECA member earning state finalist status, Students Against Destructive Decisions, and a valued member of the Celine Symphonic Band. Additionally, Erin has showcased her talents as a majorette, earning the honor of captain during her senior year. Erin is the current Ms. Celine. Most recently, Erin was recognized by the Celine Area Chamber of Commerce as the Youth of the Year. Erin's dedication to her pursuits and her community is commendable, and is what the Good Citizen Award is all about. Erin's future plans will be to attend Michigan State University and to study marketing, and of course, she will continue to keep herself extra busy, as she will be a feature twirler with the Spartan Marching Band. Congratulations, Erin, and let's give her a round of applause. And at this time, we'd like to present Erin with the Good Citizen Award. There is a certificate. We give our Good Citizen Award winners a book called Seventeen Seventy-Six, written by David McCullough. It's very appropriate, and there's a, a check, a wallet card, and a pen. So, congratulations, and we look forward to recognizing another student from Celine High School this coming year under the guidance of Ms. Stager and her staff. Thank you for the opportunity to let us share what DAR is and to honor Erin. Thank you for the opportunity to let us share what DAR is and to honor Erin and her parents, her teachers, coaches, all for the encouragement and the empowerment they have provided to Erin to become such a good citizen. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Lesley, it was nice meeting you and the rest of the folks from the DAR. Tran, were you going to try and grab some pictures of them out in the foyer? Or foyer? Thank you. We're at the response to previous public comment. Now, I've tried to get away from making too many statements, and I've actually got this down to a tight three and a half minutes now, I think. At the April 23rd Board Meeting, there were several comments from the public, and I really would like to address as many of them as I can. So the Board was asked about Neola's perceived reluctance in helping the district to develop administrative guidelines, and perhaps suggesting that it was a way of delaying implementation of the transgender, non-binary student policy. Neola normally doesn't take an active role in the development of admin guidelines, they're generated as needed by the district's administration. But soon after that last Board Meeting, the Superintendent was finally able to connect with a Neola rep who looked at the DEI AC's recommendations for potential administrative guidelines and found that many of them could be crafted into a set of guidelines, and they have been so, there is a draft now. It's important to note that although administrative guidelines may be presented to the Board by policy, we're not really required to review them or vote on them. They're developed as a tool for administrators to help them to implement the policies of the district. Their absence does not mean that a policy is not being implemented, is the point I really would like to underline. To illustrate this point, the transgender, non-binary student policy, it's Policy 5517.02, for those of you following along, has been implemented and continues to be implemented in many aspects, and these include restroom accommodations as well as training for staff. To be specific, in response to the section titled "Access to Gender-Segregated Activities and Facilities," the district has added six gender-neutral bathrooms at the high school, opened gender-neutral bathrooms at the middle school, and created processes for students who prefer access to gender-neutral bathrooms and locker spaces. In response to the section titled "Training and Professional Development," the district has hired a DEI position to provide internal training around culturally responsive instruction, and staff are required to use shared definitions of culturally responsive instruction as part of the DEI reflections within their annual evaluations. So the list of training activities is actually quite long, and I've cut out a great number of them, so I'll just share some of the highlights. The administration offered a district-wide professional development last year titled "Inclusion Is," and that included sessions such as "From Policy to Practice," and "Using Data to Improve Outcomes for All Students," "Exploring Data Through an Equity Lens," and many others. The district developed a law, policy, and guidance supporting DEI and CRI reference sheet for staff, as well as both professional development and as a tool for communicating with parents. The district developed a transgender, non-binary FAQ to support staff, and a group of four district leaders attended the Creating Change for LGBTQ+ Equity Training in order to better provide internal supports for operationalizing this policy. The administration developed a communications plan for social identity-related incidents, and the leadership at the high school embraced Rachel's challenge to increase inclusive community and understanding, and many, many more. The administration continues to work on aligning student handbooks and power school reporting in order to properly report and address bullying, harassment, and hate speech and acts. There were other comments at the last Board Meeting regarding the implementation of the policy, and they included record-keeping, deadnaming by staff, and field trip accommodations. I'd like to note how difficult and challenging those particular situations are, and that they are taken up and can be taken up on a one-by-one basis. We would urge you, if you have those concerns, to reach out to the Superintendent or Administration to assist with resolving your concerns. And on a personal note, one speaker at the podium mentioned something which was, to me, quite profound. She mentioned that small, unresolved instances of abuse or transgressions, seemingly negligible, that will accumulate throughout the day and become an emotional burden, and for some of our more fragile students, it becomes an existential crisis. Students who experience these threats and slights throughout the day must then deal with their accumulated weight, and that thought has remained with me since the last meeting. As a representative of this Board, let me say that we recognize parents who speak on these concerns, that we recognize that parents who speak on these concerns want to be an asset, and we, as a Board, want to be supportive. And that's the end of my response to the public comment from last week. Revisions, approval of the agenda, items can be added or deleted from the agenda, or the order can be changed at the request of an individual Board Member or the Superintendent. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved, Miller.
Thank you.
Support, Gerby.
Miller, Gerby. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, J.M., BG, thank you, 6-0, thank you very much. I'd like to hand it over now to Caroline and Mateo, our wonderful student representatives.
For tonight's student showcase, it'll be the Ethics Team. The presenters are Michael Bryant, Brian Kang, Alex Larson, Colin Learman, and Sarah Youssef with their advisor, Mr. Ornellus.
Hello, we are the Celine High School Ethics Team, and we just want to thank you all for recognizing us again today. Before I begin, we want to thank Mr. Ornellus, who isn't here today, but he has been our coach for this year, and it was his first year being the ethics coach, and he did such a great job. And so, yeah, we want to thank Mr. O. We also want to thank Shelley Venema, who is no longer a teacher at the Celine High School, but she was our first teacher when we first joined the team as sophomores, and she created the Ethics Club, or sorry, the Ethics Team at Celine High School a few years back, and she came back to see us perform or compete, see us compete at the national level, so we want to thank her for all that she did for us. And also Janine Delay from A2 Ethics, and A2 Ethics as well, for giving us the opportunity in Michigan to have such a strong philosophy competition program at the University of Michigan. So before we talk more about what we did at the national competition, I want to give you guys kind of like a rundown of what our team is like, how we became a team. So, we like to have fun. Our team is made up of just, you can see it as pretty much just one big friend group. Michael, Colin, and Alex have been childhood friends for a long time, and so they share a personal connection that way, and they're also on the Celine High School soccer team, and they played at the club level as well. So not only do they share a personal connection, but they also share a connection as athletes and teammates. And on top of that, Michael and Sarah has been debate partners since eighth grade, and so when it comes to ethics, they have it down with their partnership, and it was really cool to watch them, you know, embrace their partnership as well. And so, yeah, we would also like to let you guys know that Mr. O isn't here today, like I said, but he has had a great relationship with all of us, and without him, we really wouldn't have made it to where we did at the national competition. We had a lot of weekly check-ins with him, meeting with him to see how our cases were going, and he really put his utmost care into how we prepared ourselves for the national competition.
Yeah, so before we get into exactly what we do, it's been a few years in the making since we've, before we've made it to nationals. So sophomore year was our first year, we all competed, that was COVID, so it was online, but we did well, we placed third in the state, and we basically learned how ethics ran in short and what to do, how it works. Then our junior year, we competed again at the state level, and we got second. At that point, we got a pretty good rundown of how it works, we got a good format going for each person. And then senior year, we worked really hard, we learned a lot of ethical things. So, we got really good with the cases, we were able to win the states and then go on to nationals and place third, so it was awesome.
Yeah, so a bit of what ethics bowl actually entails in terms of the competition itself, it's two teams competing in a room with three judges, and we have a case set of 15 cases that address ethical issues in the world. And each team gets a certain case, the first case is given to the team that presents first, that team gets to have a presentation and share their thoughts on the case and possibly a solution to the problem. And then the second team gets to ask them questions to hope to further their, you know, discussion of the case, and the team gets a response period to respond to the case, and then the judges try to ask some deeper questions to really push that team and think about really the ethical implications of the case, and then it just switches sides.
So based on our topics for nationals and the state level as well, they're very heavy in most of the content, and they go beyond of what your normal thinking in your daily situations go for. So we've had cases on like if a cow were to consent to being eaten, is it ethical to eat that cow, to things like when is it okay to out someone, and is it ever okay? And so a lot of the topics go back to different philosophical dilemmas, but of course, your like, your judges are philosophers, they're professors, and so they obviously know a bit more than us as high schoolers, and so what we try to do always is show our knowledge and defend our knowledge against the professors, and always extend our train of thinking when we realize that there is more to think about, and so that's a lot of what ethics is.
Yeah, and so for the actual like national competition in North Carolina, we were able to place third out of, I think, about 30 teams. After we won the Michigan competition, we participated in a regional competition against Maryland, and we won that round, which then sent us to nationals, and each state does that, which means about half the states, so like 25 to 30 states participate at the national bowl. And the way it worked is on the first day of the competition, we had preliminary rounds where I believe we went 3-1, which then qualified us for the quarterfinal on Sunday, and we won our first quarterfinal round, and then we lost on a 2-1 decision in the semifinal, and then on points, we were awarded third place. We were really excited about this because Celine Ethics is relatively new to a lot of teams in the state, but particularly teams across the country, and we really hope that Celine Ethics can continue to carry on our legacy and go back to national competitions and potentially win one day. So, like Brian mentioned, thank you all, I want to thank Mr. O, Ms. Venema, the Michigan Philosophy Department, and everyone who helped contribute to our team, so yeah, have a good night.
Ethics Team, do you mind if we do a quick photograph with you at the? Whoops. We have three, the Board has three action items this evening. I'd like to entertain a motion to support the Washtenaw Intermediate School District's proposed Special Education Millage Renewal question to be placed on the ballot of the November 5th, 2024 election, as submitted by Superintendent Lodge. So moved.
Support, Miller.
And I'm going to read a brief statement just to kind of explain the impact of the special education and millage. Before the ISD Board votes to place the Special Education Millage Renewal on the November 2024 ballot, they need a resolution from each local district school board supporting the renewal. The millage renewal language will combine two previous special education millages that both expire in June of 2025 into one combined millage renewal. The millage renewal will be for 12 years and will generate approximately $51 million a year for special education services for students in our county. Because it's a renewal, there is no change to the current property tax rate. Celine Area Schools would lose approximately $9.75 million a year if the renewal doesn't pass, so it is significant and very important.
It was Tim Austin made the motion, seconded by Jennifer Miller. Any questions for Dr. Lodge?
I would add that I did put more of an FAQ flyer at everybody's desk, it gives a few more answers in a one-page format.
I suspect there's going to be plenty of opportunities to talk about this throughout the rest of the next few months. Treasurer Gerby.
Yeah, I just want to give my, I don't know, words of support on behalf of the Finance Team, right? Like, these are essential services from incredible human beings who are doing great work. You know, I was talking to someone, and I guess I was going to say this after you present, because I'm sure it'll be extraordinary in a few minutes, but just that, I was talking to a parent at, you know, Celine Soccer this weekend, and they said that they sought out Celine specifically for our special education services and the quality of the people and the quality of things that we do. I mean, they said like we could have chose to go anywhere, and Celine was the choice. So anyway, so, and I know that that represents the WISD, I know that represents the commitments we have with our families, all of it. So my point is, like, I emphatically support this, and I think this is essential, and it's incredible for our students, and we're doing great work with this money, so just want to say that a lot.
Great, well, let's put this to a vote, please, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, 6-0, thank you very much. The next recommended motion before the Board, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the recommendation that NBS Commercial Interiors and Interior Environment supply and install the furniture in the new Hornet Operations Center in the amount of $134,897.02, which includes a 5% contingency as submitted by Rex Clary, Executive Director of Operations.
Gerby. Motion.
Do we have support?
Support, Miller. Oh, or you want Susan? Okay.
Susan, you got it?
Sure. Okay, next, okay. Miller, this time.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Rex, just operated.
So this will be the new furniture package for the Operations Center with this approval. We're still scheduled for a Halloween move-in date and a certificate of occupancy to the operations in Celine Area Schools. So this would ensure the delivery of the furniture before that date, so we could do a seamless move together as a group during the month of October at some point.
Does the move-in date correspond with the opening ceremony?
It could.
But it doesn't have to, I mean, but I'm just asking.
We're, when I start to see asphalt, we'll start to see asphalt in August, we're finishing up cement in the interiors, windows and doors will be going in here in the month of June, so we're starting to get it weather tight and moving forward pretty quick, so.
Are there discussion, comments? Thank you, I'd like to put this to a vote then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, hearing none, 6-0, thank you, and please stick around. I'd also like to entertain the motion to approve the recommendation from LeCoul Planners that Yellow Light Incorporated be awarded a contract in the amount of $605,880 for the Celine Middle School roof integrated solar installation, as submitted by Rex Clary, Executive Director of Operations.
So moved.
So moved, who was that, Tim?
Support, Eastep.
Thank you, trustee Eastep.
So this is the last piece to bid for the middle school, this is the installation of the panels. We've purchased the panels for the middle school and the high school, we've purchased all the professional design work. We still have to bid the high school roof and the high school installation of the panels this fall for next summer's work, but this completes pretty much the high school. It's, we're under budget, actually, as right now, we're projected to be under cost of It's, we're under budget actually, as right now, we're projected to be under cost of one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars compared to the budget we presented on December twelfth. So we are trending in the right direction. Not without work. We did have to rebid this to get more bid coverage and we also adjusted the schedule to get better pricing. We were, we did come in over budget on the first bid, so we reposted it within the necessary time and then we was able to get more competitive pricing from more bidders, the way in which we did it on this time. So excellent work by La Collie Planners, Amoresco, they're proven to be an excellent partner, ensuring that we're going to get the rebates, ensuring that we're taking all the necessary steps. Rand has been working with us, doing a great job of, you know, again, leading those meetings, asking the right questions, so.
Fantastic.
And I'll even back that up. We talked a little bit about this at Finance and first of all, I want to give my appreciation to you, I think you're being an incredible steward with our taxpayers' dollars and I appreciate you taking that time and rebidding it and saying, let's do that. So, but the other thing I think we were talking about was this money, we actually did already approve the funds, okay, to do this. This is just for the contract, I think it was part of like a one point six million, is that correct?
One point six million is the budget for the installation of the panels at both buildings. Yes.
So anyway, so I support this and I appreciate your diligence.
Thank you.
Let's put this to a vote then, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, six-o. Appreciate all the hard work, Mr. Clary.
And I will like to say that thank you to community education. You know, we've got, we use our schools to the fullest this summer and, you know, he generates revenue, our kids get to go to camps, they use great facilities, he's bouncing around, we got a roofing project at the middle school, we got construction at the high school, we got limited capacity, so Brian Puffer is doing a great job just making sure it works, communicating, and I thank him a lot for doing that with us and working with us, so.
Well, that's great. And in case the rest of the board has thought I've forgotten, I am still working on a field trip up for myself, up to Jean-Paul II Secondary School. Yeah, I know, it's farther away than I expected, but I will do a photo op, a photo shoot there on a really hot day, I'm sure, and we'll figure out how they cool the place electrically. Should be fun, right? Thank you, enjoy. We have one scheduled, we have one scheduled report tonight and I'd like to introduce or call up to the front Monica Ellis and Kevin Masson. Is that it? You just...
President McVeigh, Dr. Lodge, thank you for having us. We do want to invite a team, a team up here to help us present, and that's who we are in special education, we're a team that works together each and every day, and I think it's important that we present this as a team. So my members, my leaders, if you would come up, including you, come up, oh yeah, all of you. Where's our connecting students? Come on up. The whole group. I'm going to have them each introduce themselves as we kind of go through this. We split up the slides and it's important that everyone knows there's a rhyme and reason why we've done what we've done, but ultimately, we have a lot of our teacher leaders here, they lead inside of their schools each and every day. We have our students, our connecting students that are also here today, they lead each and every day inside of their schools and other schools, and we want to welcome them, want to make sure that everyone has a name and a face. So we're going to do some quick introductions here before Monica and I get started.
Hi, I'm Laney Miller, I'm a senior at the Celine High School and I've been in the Connecting Program for two years now.
Hi, my name is Kate Ashman, I'm a senior at Celine High School and this is my first year of Connecting.
I will be a paraeducator next year while attending school.
I am Nick Ruffe, I'm a senior and I like, I love going to Connecting Club because I'm graduating and I'm really excited.
I'm Drew Miller and this is my first year in Connecting, I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Noah Masson, I'm a senior and I've been a part of the Connecting Program for two years.
Hi, I'm Trish Fair and I teach the Connecting Program and also I'm an advisor for the Connecting Club.
I'm Jody Felkamp, I work at Celine Middle School and this is my twenty-fifth year of teaching.
We started our careers together and helped develop your life skill program.
We did.
Yeah, she's carried me for years.
Yes, I have.
I'm Alicia Zach, I'm one of the early childhood special education teachers and a former Connecting student.
Hi, I'm Heidi Phelps, I am one of the representatives from the High School Resource Room Life Skills.
She's also a department leader and there will be a day that she stands up here at this podium and presents to you likely in one of these roles, just so everyone knows.
My name is Meg McClure, I'm also one of the teacher leaders at the high school and I teach Resource Room.
Hi, I'm Katie McGee, I'm one of the district's board certified behavior analysts.
Hi, I'm Emma Staffney, I graduated from Celine last year and I'm a registered behavior technician at Woodland Meadows.
Hi, I'm Daisy Sherman, I am a parent in the district, I am the PAC rep for the WISD and on the CEAC Committee.
Hi, I'm Luana Putz and I'm the Student Services Specialist.
Amongst many things, just so everyone knows, without Luana, the wheels kind of fall off, okay?
Monica Ellis, Assistant Director for Special Education.
And Kevin Masson, the interim director of special education for just a little bit longer, about ready to get back into retirement. But we're going to get this started and we're going to have Ben, he's working with us today. I'm not one to always follow the slides, but I think everyone knows our passion and our goal in special education, that's to make our students a part of our community, to make sure that they're accepted. And that's something that's really important when you look around and you look at these Connecting Students and the work that they do each and every day. You look at our community and how accepting it is, you look at the job sites that we have, the people that we have, and it's really a special place. So forgive me for not always following along, reading things verbatim, word for word, but that really is who we are. Without this team, this wouldn't happen, all right? I want to make sure that we are recognizing this team. These people are outstanding each and every day, what they do for us. So I want to make sure that that's known.
Thank you, Ben. So I'm not going to read the vision and mission statement of the Special Education Department, but this was established in two thousand and I think it still is very applicable today, but I think the thing that stands out from that mission statement is we collaborate with Gen Ed teachers, the Gen Ed staff, parents, community, and students. And that's what we tried to do today, is to bring those people to the front because they really do the job each and every day. And I think the last part of that mission is so important, success is a journey and not a destination. And I think that's what we have to keep in mind with all of our students, it's not the same path and it shouldn't be, but it is success in their individual way.
All right, I'm going to try to give everyone a quick overview of our student demographics, so I have some numbers for you. So as of today, we have a total of eight hundred and fifty-one special education students and eight hundred and twenty-three of those currently have active IEPs and the other twenty-eight are under an initial evaluation and will have their IEPs by the end of the school year. Also, as of today, our staff has completed initial evaluations for a hundred and thirty-three students for this school year, so that's quite a few. Now by building, I'll try to go through this quickly, but just to give you an idea of how many students are in each building, Early Intervention has thirty-eight students, Early Childhood Special Education has twenty-six, Harvest seventy-five, Pleasant Ridge seventy-two, Woodland Meadows seventy-two, Heritage a hundred and eight students, Middle School a hundred and sixty-five, High School two hundred and three, our Alternative High School has ten, Young Adult Program thirty-six, and then we have two non-public schools that we do support and that's Washtenaw Christian Academy, we have fourteen students there, and St. Andrew, we have four students. Now, as for the primary disabilities, the breakdown, I'm just going to give you the top four. The majority of the students that we service, there's two hundred and seven, two hundred and seventeen students with other health impairment as their primary disability. The next highest would be our speech and language impairment disability of one hundred and seventy-six students, followed by specific learning disability, we have a hundred and sixty-nine students with that as their primary disability. And then for autism spectrum disorder, we have a hundred and sixty-two students. We do also service students with primary disabilities of cognitive impairment, early childhood developmental delay, emotional impairment, deaf or hard of hearing, physical impairment, traumatic brain injury, visual impairment, and severe multiple impairment. We do have some slides, I don't know if he's showing them or not, but we have a breakdown of the special education, special education students by gender and grade level. Gender, it's approximately sixty percent of our special education students are male and then forty percent are female. Grade level, I don't know if you want me to go through every grade level, but I'll highlight just the highest grade levels. Eleventh grade has seventy-eight special education students, followed by third grade with sixty-six, and then our early childhood program and seventh grade both have sixty-four students. And all the others are ranging from thirty-eight on up to, you know, sixty, forty-nine, and so on. Next, the breakdown of students by ethnicity, the Asian-American students, twenty-three, Black African-American students, twenty-four, Hispanic or Latino students, forty-three, multiracial students, seventy-eight, and white students, six hundred and seventy-two. As I mentioned, we do provide services to non-public schools in our district. The services we provide are the teacher consultant services, speech services, social work services, along with occupational therapy and physical therapy.
So this is our program overview, this is where we range in our special education services. So we have a few different multiple of ways that we service students, one of which is our teacher consultants, and that's where our students receive services within our Gen Ed classrooms. We also have resource rooms that we utilize, which is additional assistance that's beyond the Gen Ed classrooms. Then we have specialized life skill programs in the district, which is more intensive support for our students that have more significant disabilities in essential of the life skill areas. And then we have early childhood, which is ages three to five, and our young adult program ages eighteen to twenty-six.
So in addition to all of those core services, we are offering a range of related services to support all of our children and students. That's things like speech and language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, social work, our BCBAs, and also utilizing assistive technology. So our goal is always to provide individualized instruction and programming to help reach everybody, gain their full potential within Celine area schools.
Hold on, one second.
So I truly have to say I have the best job in the whole district, I say it all the time, I try not to let everybody know because I don't want people coming for me. I get to work with the most amazing students, I get to see the change and the growth and the love, like truly, Mateo's one of us, absolutely. And it's just, it's just the most rewarding, rewarding job and I'm so thankful for it. We were recently invited to present at, with Governor Whitmore and some legislatures on the Connecting Program. And again, it says so much about Celine, of all our amazing programs, they chose our inclusion program, which again shows Celine's dedication to inclusion and it's just who we are, it's just, it's what we do and we love it. So I think first we'll show a quick video of, that we put together, we were the only school that had students put together video, every school put together a video of their program, and most schools did a professional video production company and we said, no, we got this. So Faith Pearson and Nate Bush put together an absolutely amazing video.
According to the New Oxford American Dictionary, the word "connecting" means joining or linking things together, especially so as to provide access and communication. Here at Celine, we bring this word to life.
Connecting is very much an experiential learning class, students learn about different disabilities and then they go out and work in the district with people from two all the way to older than me. They are basically job shadowing, kind of like a paraeducator or a special education teacher, so they're learning how to, first of all, be comfortable with people who are different, how to be welcoming to people who are different, just about becoming a better person.
Founded at Celine High School in the fall of nineteen ninety-eight, on top of peer paraeducating training, the Connecting Program has grown to include participating in numerous peer bonding field trips and local fundraisers.
My favorite part of Connecting is the community we build because I might not know everybody in the Connecting Program, but I definitely can walk into the room feeling comfortable with everybody.
One of the things that makes Connecting so strong is they're high school students, so they're really cool, so they can get kids to do things that we adults could never do.
The Connecting Program has been known to change students' perspectives and plans for the future.
When I first joined the Connecting Program, I thought that it was just going to be an easy class, but instead in return, my perspective is so much different now. Before, I feel like I would always jump to conclusions, judgments, because we all make judgments, it's inevitable. I tend to stop myself and think about they're living a different life.
I have had so many kids who are kind of on the line, are they going to go this way or that way? And they take Connecting and it truly is life-changing for them and it kind of steers the whole course of their life.
I've always known I wanted to be a dancer, but from starting Connecting, I have noticed my passion for special education and helping people. So someday, I would love to open up a studio and have classes for kids with disabilities.
Everyone needs a place that feels comfortable, especially in high school when things seem to be changing all the time. It's important to have a place that stays the same.
I think that's one of my favorite parts about Connecting is, in our competitive school, it's not about your academic, it's not about your IQ, it's about are you a good human? And I think we all need that.
How do you feel?
I feel I'm have the winning shot and I beat the whole team.
Yeah, he did.
I'm a Connecting student and I love helping people. We have friendships, group lunch every day, first days, it's really important to me and it's the best part of my life.
I think every school should have a Connecting Program because this class has really spread inclusivity throughout our school and even for people not in the Connecting Program, it can motivate everybody to be more inclusive.
High school's hard, I mean, it's hard for a lot of people, so to feel like a rock star and know that you're doing good, important work and making a difference, like, that's pretty life-changing. All right, I know you want to hear from them, but just one more thing that I'm super proud of is I put together, there's a site linked in here, we don't have to go through that now, just kind of a where are they now of former Connecting Students? And as of today, we have fifteen former Connecting Students working in the district in some capacity. We have a former Connecting Student who's now running the new-to-use store. We have a Connecting Student that's in architectural school studying specifically inclusive spaces. We have so many OTs right now, so, so super proud of that, but I know you want to hear from them, so just kind of what is Connecting to you or what does it mean to you?
My Connecting experience has been a great one and it's gone too fast now that I'm in my last two weeks of school. I started Connecting last year, sorry. Wow, I'm just like my mom. So last year, I took really hard classes and Connecting was a class I could feel safe in and free to express myself. And then after last year, I knew I wanted to do it again this year and I have really enjoyed my experience. In the beginning of the year, I chose to go to a high school classroom and that was the best decision I have ever made because the connections I've made with the students are incredible. Not only am I helping them, they're helping me more and I have become best friends with so many of the students that I work with. A few of them are invited to my grad party just because I love them so much and I'm so excited. I have also been able to help a student after school and drive him home and that made us become closer and that has just been like the highlight of my year. Connecting has been my why for my life for the past years. It's the reason I wake up in the morning... It's the reason I wake up in the morning. It's the reason I'm excited to come to school. And it's the reason that I'm really sad to leave. So I hope that I can always make my mark with inclusion wherever I go. And that's why I want to dedicate my life to this, like we saw in the video. So I'm excited to pursue both of my passions and make it one. So that's kind of what the connecting experience is for me, but there's way more, but I won't take your time.
So my connecting experience, I'm very grateful to be a part of it. It's definitely my favorite part of the day, getting a break from in-person classes at the high school. And I actually have two connecting placements back to back, which is pretty awesome. And I'm at Will the Meadows and then Heritage. And just being able to hang out with them, it's, it's truly special. And I said it when I was in Lansing on the panel. It's, yeah, you, you help them with their reading and writing and their math and all that, but you learn so much from your connecting students and it's truly special. And I'm so thankful to be a part of it. And yeah, thank you.
So like the video said, without connecting, I would not know that I wanted to go into either working with like special education or just working with the special needs population in general. And I just would not have known that without connecting. I want to thank Ms. Fair because she has been my rock through this and has really helped me just fully embrace connecting. It's definitely, I wish I would have joined at my freshman year because it was truly life-changing. And I'm like forever grateful for the relationship that I have built with all of my students and even with my paras and my teachers that I have worked with. I love them all so much. And this by far will be my favorite memory of high school and the best class that I've ever taken.
Okay, so this is my first year in connecting the class, but I've been a leader of connecting club this year and then been a member for the past few years. So both of those experiences have really changed my life and shown me passion that I've never seen before. Nick and I are also on the State Youth Activation Committee for Special Olympics. So we drive to Lansing every once in a while this year. And that has been truly a life-changing moment, getting to sing in the car with him and getting to have those fun memories together has been a super important aspect of this year and a memory I'll never forget.
The best part of connecting is like I can see a lot of people. And I'm graduating. I want to thank Ms. Fair, my mom and dad. And they're the best. I would say Kevin Musson is the, like, I love going to Lansing to see all the people. In school for me, I will say I would to miss everybody in the school. And I'm going to miss Hadi Phelps. She's special to me and I care about her.
All right. As you can see, we all get emotional because we just, we love it. It truly is whoever said their why, it is our why and it's, it's why we do it. Have some very exciting things coming up. Getting, in fact, I just talked to Kelly today from Dexter, doing a lot of unified sports. We did a, we threw in some unified basketball with our student staff, basketball game this, this year, and it was amazing. The whole high school just cheering for our kids. That's what inclusion's all about. So we have some basketball games planned. And we are also have been invited to play at LCA with the Pistons. So we'll do either before or after and we'll be selling tickets. So if you can help us sell tickets to that, yeah. We already promised the guy that we would sell the most because it's Celine and that's what we do, because we're inclusive. So we're super excited about that. So a lot of unified sports. I am actually stepping down from the connecting club, Ms. Munn and I, because we've done it for seven years. And I want to kind of spend my time more getting the unified going. So Ms. McClure and Ms. Marky or Ms. Ghost is going to take it over. So we're super excited about that. Get some young, fresh blood in there. It's super fun. Yeah, so just great things happening for connecting. And again, thank you and thank you, Celine, for making this happen because it is, it is unique and it's, it's beautiful. And it is what makes Celine so awesome.
Thank you to the connecting students very much for what they do each and every day. You guys can go have a seat. You did a great job, Nick. Did you tell your parents, hey, Nick? Nick, did you tell your parents how much sugar I gave you on the way to Lansing? All those donuts? You tell, yeah, that happened, that happened. We do want to show you just a quick little bit of this video. This was Celine versus Dexter this year. This is, this is a part of what we're trying to do. What we're trying to improve on is become, to become more a part of the unified sports. We're talking about football for next year. Dr. Lott has made that a point with our new football coach, that he will be helping us with that. We have a bowling league. Most of you don't know that, but I think this Friday we'll be bowling again. So we're trying to increase this as much as we can to get this exposure for our students. But Ben, if you could just show a little clip of this. I think this is a great day for us. Thank you, Ben. I think you guys get the point with that. So it's a lot of fun. At the bowling alley, they have pizza, they have pop. It's a great time. They do a wonderful job together. So it's a lot of fun. I'm going to welcome up Heidi and Meg. They're going to talk a little bit about our staffing and professional development.
So like Kevin said, it really does take a whole team to do what we do. And this slide highlights just how many people it takes. So throughout the district, we have 20 teacher consultants, 16 resource room teachers, 12 life skills resource room teachers, four young adult teachers, two ECSE or early childhood special education teachers, 13 speech and language pathologists, 10 social workers, four school psychologists, 107 para educators, four school nurses, three social emotional learning coaches. And if you know special ed, we love our acronym. So we also have two board certified behavioral analysts or BCBAs and six RBTs or registered behavior technicians. In addition to those, we also have contracted staff. So we have five part-time occupational therapists, one full-time physical therapist, and one part-time school psychologist.
So with all the staff, we always have our yearly and more annually professional developments, including the NVCI, QBS. But then on top of that, we're always looking to up our game, looking at what is remaining in compliance as far as policies and legal requirements. And then what with that, collaborating with the ISD here in Washington County, where we've had professional development as a department, working on different PAF statements, looking at interactive IUPs for our staff to utilize and recall in differentiation for policies. On top of that, as a district-wide, we've been able to lead some UDL practices within our district during the symposium. We've also been looking at increasing our evidence-based interventions as a department. And this summer, we're looking forward to as a small team, collaborating and partnering up to see how we can really expand those interventions to meet our student needs and really all of Celine's student needs. And then number five is that collaborative effective piece. Continuing the partnerships we have within the community, within our district, each building, each level. There's so many different components, so many team members, as Meg said, that it's never without that collaborative piece that we have been successful in our development.
Flip it for me. Thank you. All right. Daisy? Oh, are we up next or are you guys next and then? Okay, well, come on up then. You guys come up. I flipped too soon. Emma Staffney and Katie McGee.
Hi, so we're talking about the collaboration and partnerships of Celine. So first, we have our MTSS integration, which is our multi-tiered systems of support. And this is collaborating with staff to address student needs at all tiers and all levels. Second is our transition support, partnering with adult agencies for post-school planning. So really looking at what our students can get after they're out of school. Michigan Alliance for Families, so providing resources and support for parents.
Then also, we're collaborating with therapeutic services in the community for students that are seeking outside therapies to provide resources and the support in that manner. And then also for community inclusion. So we're really partnering with the local organizations for inclusive opportunities. This includes job sites for our young adult students. This includes field trips. This also includes partnering with grocery stores for our kiddos in those life skills classroom, working on those life skills and being a part of the community and all the things that come with life skills such as shopping. And then also, one of our really big programs is collaborating with the WISD for the Para to Teacher Corps, and this takes, this gives paras opportunity and scholarships to continue their education, to become certified teachers. And a lot of the times, a lot of those certified teachers also end up being a part of our program, which is wonderful.
All right, Daisy, you're up. I got it this time. I got it this time. You know, this is, this is one of the most important things that I think we do. And that's our special education advisory committee and our relationship with our families. They are the voice to us so we can hear concerns. And we hear that on a monthly basis. So Monica and I are always there to meet with them. They create a wonderful agenda. But our SEAC has really took it up a notch. And this new team of SEAC members has really done a remarkable job to create parent mentors, coffee time for our parents, more training for parents. In addition to what we, I'm sorry, I tend to do that sometimes. Ladies and gentlemen, Daisy Sharman right here.
My gosh, he took, look, all of my notes. My gosh. The SEAC relaunched after COVID. It sort of wasn't here for a while and then we relaunched after COVID and we came back to school. We have reps from young adult all the way down to ECSE. So we want to have a parent rep for every building. Let's see, the reps from the SEAC also sit on the WISD PAC. So that's myself. And who else is, is it Tara? Tara right now? Okay.
Transition.
Yep. Let's see, what else? We partner, we're trying to partner with the special education staff and the foundation to help with grants. We're trying to provide educational opportunities and resources for parents in the district who have questions. Also, connect parents and their students with social groups. We just had a K5 meetup at Pleasant Ridge on Friday, which was really successful. We had quite a few parents and kids show up and they all had a great time. Alicia was there, so, yeah. So anything else? Okay.
Thank you. I do that sometimes. You know, part of the, part of the way in which we do this too is we do a parent survey. And that's important to hear the voice of the parent. So we do a survey. It used to be every year. Right now, it's every couple of years because there's a lot of things that, that we need to do, you know? There's a lot of things that they're requesting of us. You know, we've revamped our SEAC. We've, we've worked on our website according to what parents are asking. We've worked on more parent trainings. So this is a part of what we're hearing consistently out there. So we're trying to do a much better job of making sure that we do that. So this partnership has been really important for us, making sure I didn't forget anything. The parent mentor part, I just want to, that, that to me is one of the most important things. At every grade level, at every building, as you transition in, there's a parent mentor for you as a parent. They can guide you through processes. They can guide you through what it's like in that building. And that's important. So we have these parent mentors actually listed on our website. And, and so far, the feedback has been really, really great. They're going to be at all of our kindergarten open houses. You're going to start seeing them at our open houses. We've got them a banner for their table. So please say hello when you have a chance. You'll see Daisy at, at the high school and she'll be representing and helping parents adjust because it's so different just going from building to building. And that's what that's about. And I'm really proud of the fact that we were able to get that done for our parents this year. So, thank you. Oh, on to budget. That's you and I, Monica. All right, we just talked a little bit about this and I think that this is important. There's, there's the village component. Are we on the slide there? You're always there. Thank you, Ben. So with that, we wanted to show you just kind of the revenue breakdown of how things look. First is, is the intermediate, sorry, the WISD County Tax Act 18. That's about 61% of our funding. All right, so when we talked about that, thank you, Mr. Gerby, for your kind words. That's very much appreciated. And you heard the difference of what that would be as we go through this budget. Nine million dollars. That's a, that's a massive deficit to us in, in the programming that we do. You have 9% of that being federally funded and also 30% being state-funded. So Monica's going to talk just a little bit about our expenses.
So much of our expenses go to the very talented and very successful staff with, you know, salary and budget and benefits. But we also have a small section, well, not small, but it's 5% of contracted services. And that is something that Kevin and I have really tried to look at and adjust. And during COVID, we really had to rely on some of the contracted services because we weren't finding quality employees. So we had to rely on that. But now we are looking at other ways. We are getting better pools of candidates. So we're able to hopefully reduce that a little bit because those services tend to be a little bit more expensive. And then obviously materials. So we do need to have, you know, materials in the classrooms and we're constantly looking at other ways to make sure that we're being fiscally responsive with, responsible with those materials. Got too many papers here.
I do.
And they're sticky.
They are. Those previously stapled. All right, next is kind of our future plans and goal. And that's going to be Katie and Emma Staffney. Again, they're going to talk a little bit about our future plans and goals. Thank God there's no red cards today because we're just going to keep going, just so you know.
So for the upcoming school year, one of our big goals is for the transition of new leadership. And this is to ensure that the transition is smooth and we're providing supports for that new leadership and continuing just to grow our leadership systems. And then enhance tier-one social emotional support. This is to ensure that all students have access to social emotional learning as well as embedding some of that, some of those practices into our daily curriculum for all students. And then also improve student achievement objectives. So setting ambitious yet attainable goals for academic growth and wellbeing.
And then we also have our professional development initiatives. So providing ongoing training for staff on evidence-based procedures, so things that are proven to work, and of course, our cultural competence. And then our family and community engagement. So engaging families and the community as partners in student support and education.
Okay, just in, just in conclusion, I, I think you guys understand, we're, we're in a transitional part of our careers where we're, we're doing our very best to get our next leaders ready. We've had two wonderful candidates. Nothing to be determined yet, but we were very excited about both candidates that had applied for the executive director position. Both very, very talented people. So we're excited to kind of see this. We're excited to be a part of this transition into new leadership. That's going to be a huge component of, of what we do moving forward. In addition, we want to continue to expand that evidence-based interventions, making sure that everything that we do with our students has evidence behind it when we're working with, through curriculums. That, the expansion of our unified sports, as well as continuing our peer-to-peer connecting programs, our pals program, our stars program, that's crucial. That's critical. We've heard it in interviews. We've heard it from people. They grew up. They were born and raised in it. They didn't know it any different. And that's really what we're about. And we appreciated hearing some of that during, during the recent interviews that we've been through. So for our conclusion, we wanted to open it up. We wanted to thank you all for this opportunity. Thank our teams. They're outstanding. They're wonderful. Our connecting students, thank you guys all for coming in tonight. You know, we know there's going to be some Q and A. I've had some great emails already from a few of you that we've kind of been able to, to look at ideas and suggestions that you have. So we appreciate that. But is there any other questions that the board has for us?
We'll just open it up to the board. If anyone wants to pipe up.
And I'd like to know what other board members may be, you know, talking. If you took away anything from conversation prior to this meeting. So I love all of the collaboration that happens in the district that supports. So, um, I love all of the collaboration that happens in the district, um, that supports some of our students who have disabilities, um, with initiatives that are promoting belonging. Uh, my own children have had opportunities to participate in programs like PALS at the middle school, um, and mentorship, which I believe, um, sort of new between the high school and elementary students. Um, and so, um, it's, you know, sounds, I've gotten great feedback about the mentorship and, uh, being excited to, um, see mentors on Thursday, so, gotten good, good feedback from, uh, students. Um, and so, um, clearly, you know, there's lots of strengths, um, in, you know, that you've showcased here, um, tonight, and, uh, you're elevating that, and that's wonderful. So I had questions, um, I guess, where you feel that there needs to be, where there's needs for improvement, and, um, how you're addressing it. I also would have liked, uh, to have seen, and maybe that can be another presentation, um, a lot more, uh, specific data as far as, um, inequities that exist with students with disabilities. Um, so that can include number of suspensions, bullying and harassment incidents. Um, we've heard from, um, I believe during listening sessions, um, that, uh, you know, that, that seems to be, um, something that, that occurs, um, and is an issue. And incidents, um, from adults, um, data that includes state and federal reporting, um, for example, seclusion and restraint, um, data, and data broken down by race and ethnicities. So, um, you know, and it's something we talk about in the D E I Advisory Committee, and so I think, um, that's important, um, just to, um, you know, address and, um, see, you know, see how, um, improvement's happening there. And then, sorry, um, and then how, how it's being addressed. Um, so, uh, professional development for, um, staff, um, so not just the, the staff who work in special education, but, you know, how are the educators being supported with, um, students who, um, are within the, the classroom? And, um, you know, I know we have some, uh, people, I know Jody at the, uh, middle school is, uh, you know, supports, um, students, um, you know, communicating with, um, educators, and, um, that's wonderful. Um, so yeah, I'm just curious, um, about all of those questions.
That, that, that was a lot of questions, so let me, let me kind of break that down. If you look at things first, let's just talk about behavior and how we handle things inside Selenary Schools. First and foremost, we have monthly meetings, we, we, we do that with, uh, Katie, where'd you go? There she is. Katie, uh, her partner Sharon, uh, Liz Westfall from the I S D, Monica and myself, we break down the data. We look at what's going on specifically with students with disabilities in terms of behavior. We work together collaboratively with plans, we, we take our plans then back to the building to make sure that those are implemented appropriately. Uh, we've shown huge success, quite honestly, I have shared, uh, with the core, uh, quite often about how much we have decreased behavior and seclusion restraints. Uh, I want to say the last time I had sent it to him, that was the beginning of this year, we, we reduced everything by about fifty percent. So that's, that's, those are good numbers, I would, I'd be happy to go through and edit some of that so you guys can look at the data and the numbers specifically. But ultimately, this team approach, taking it back into the buildings, the teams that we have, and what's going on. And, and not to mention, you even have young employees like, uh, Emma Staffney, she's an R B T, right? She became a para, she made herself, she took these classes, she did all this stuff. She's one of those that, that is so talented at such a young age, that we're sending her in to work with various different students to really correct that behavior, and it's worked successfully for us. So I, I really appreciate the work of the, of the V C B As and the R B Ts to help us change that. Ultimately, is, is we kind of go forward and we think about things like what do we want to be better in? Uh, definitely that tier one, uh, we are currently the ones responsible, the social emotional learning coaches. We wanted that, we wanted that to be a part of us, we meet with them, there is money targeted for an additional person through a grant for next year, that'll give us four social emotional learning coaches. The point and purpose of that is to teach those tier one. I thought that's what it meant too. I love that. I actually was kind of, I was kind of into that, play it again. So we really want to work on that social emotional learning concept, right? So we're actually pushing these people in to teach the Gen Ed curriculums about the social emotional learning. And, and the hope is, is that we're building this tier of support. So ultimately, as we move through, those students are going to push up and better understand what it's like. I, I like the term that Trish Fair use, what it's like to be a good human. And, and I think that that's a real big point of what we're trying to do with the social emotional learning coaches. Uh, when you're, you know, so there was a lot more questions, I don't want to miss anything, what-
Yeah, because I didn't ask specifically about that component.
Okay.
So, um, yeah, so, so when you're talking about, um, some of the strength, the things that you're working on improving, right?
Yeah.
And then, what was the other, the more specific, um, data, um, so I'm glad to hear about, and I would like to hear further, um, about, you know, the decrease and, you know, that's-
Sure.
That's what I think is important to, to put out there as well, um, to the public, and, because, yeah, you know, there's been past, um, information, so, um, that's come to the public, and so, you know, it's important to, to be transparent and put that out there. Um, and then my other thing was, so the inequities, and then, um, the professional development for teachers, um, you know, the special ed, obviously, um, there's lots of, uh, training, um, and so I'm wondering how, um, yeah, how the educators, um, are being supported in that, um, yeah.
Okay. I, I think that one slide did target that information of what we're doing, uh, specifically with training for next year. So if there's any further clarification, we'd be happy to, to give it to you. If there's an area that, that the board feels that we need to look at, we'd be happy to, to, to consider that as well. Uh, again, when it comes to the data, uh, I have provided that to Dr. Lottsch in the core, we try to update them. I'll continue to do that, and, uh, I, I'm sure I can make that editable so that you guys can, can see that information to recognize, I think, what we have done, uh, consistently over this last year and a half, so, yes?
So, because trustees have asked about questions, I had asked about, um, the transportation services and the kind of training that, the, uh, and support that we have on the buses, as well as how we're fitting students, uh, with special needs, and sort of what the protocol was, uh, for transportation. So that was my question that we discussed over email, if you wanted to share, and then I just had another question about, or maybe just wanted to highlight, I wondered how the new playground, inclusive playground equipment is working out from the bond for the kids. And, um, we had talked, uh, you and I, about the, um, the new weight rooms and just ways to help all of our students. I love the inclusive sports, but maybe in cheerleading I see out in the community, but other ways to help our students stay active at all differing levels of abilities.
Yep. Starting with transportation, it was, it was, I'm, I'm glad you sent that, because a lot of times, this is about being public and talking about what we're doing. Uh, we partnered with Rex Clary, Tracy Mulcare, Inside of Transportation. There's going to be actually in August, we're going to create a day and time, that every year our parents know when you can come up. Their, their, children with disabilities would be able to get on a bus, they'd be able to walk through a bus, take a small ride. Make sure that they're seated appropriately, whether that's a Star seat, a harness, whether that's, uh, any type of restraining device that keeps them safe, uh, locking down their wheelchairs appropriately, we mark their wheelchairs. A lot of things that go on with this, so this is going to be a part of what we do each and every day. Uh, most of you are, probably aren't aware, we do train bus drivers, we do train, uh, the monitors as well, that's a part of our department. Uh, anything from the non-violent crisis intervention, we've even had things get as specific where Katie McGee could come in and work specifically on behaviors on transportation, uh, with our teams to make sure that our students are there. We often have paras that will fill in as bus monitors, so we do a lot of that training, and we're going to continue. When a parent brings it up, when others bring it up, we make sure that, uh, that's a, that's, that is a big part of, of what's happening, so thank you for that.
Speaking about the bus training, do the students, uh, our special needs students receive particular training in emergency situations, egress, that sort of thing, that's-
Yes.
Two or three times a year, something like that?
Yes, same.
Great.
Yep, no different.
And before we move on, I just wanted to say, oh-
The one question, um, trustee Coe was asking was about the weight room, and I know we are doing some good things-
We are.
Related to inclusion.
Yeah, this started back with the foundation, Joe Welton, that's a name, I tell you what, love that man. Joe Welton, who's now in Chelsea, had written a foundation grant, uh, almost ten thousand dollars. So there's a small weight room that we use each and every day at our high school. All of that equipment, we've already worked it out with Rex, Rex is redoing the lighting, he's redoing the painting. Uh, he was a part of this process, as was Dr. Lottsch, all that old equipment from twenty years ago is gone. And we are bringing in brand-new equipment, whether that's ellipticals, whether that's bikes, treadmills. Uh, so that's a part of what we're doing, so Rex has partnered with us, and, uh, we, we will have that, Rex, am I wrong? June, we're going to start the painting in June? Correct, so we'll start the painting in June, we're going to, we're going to order our equipment at the end of the month, it's in my calendar. And then, uh, we'll have everything moved in, so Rex is going to move everything, and we're going to have a brand-new weight room for our students at the high school, that's going to be neat, yeah.
We also unify P E.
Oh, yeah, oh, thank you. Unified P E, something new at our high school, uh, not just your standard physical education, there's actually going to be a unified physical education. So that, again, partners that fifty-fifty ratio of students, uh, with disabilities and non-disabilities to partner together. It's going to be not only, uh, you know, the, the different sports that they're going to learn, the workouts that they're going to learn, the foods that are important for them to eat, so it, it's really this variation of curriculum where we're super excited about having that next year, we were able to put that together, slip it in the book, and it's, it's filled. So we're excited about having that class. Playgrounds, thank you, see, I know I need to, thank you. Playgrounds, Rex, we're on schedule for all of our playgrounds this summer, yep, so playgrounds will go in this summer, modeled after, you know, some of the work that was done at Pleasant Ridge, Nicole Phelps had led that charge back in the day. So, uh, definitely more of an inclusive playground that are safer for our students, so. Yep.
I just want to say, Kevin, I want to thank you very much for your willingness to provide data, once you've edited it and taken out P I Is and whatever, that's great, looking forward to that.
Okay.
Okay, so I just want to say, I, and I say this to everyone who listens, that there is no special education around that's the same as Selen. It's really a remarkable special space. When people asked what my kids were doing last week, I said celebrating inclusion, because that's what happens here. It's not just something that, um, is a part of a program, but it's celebrated here in our schools and in our communities. And, um, like Laney said, even if you're not a part of the special education program or a part of connecting, it's creating a more inclusive space for, for our students. So, um, I've worked in three districts, and there's nothing like, um, nothing like the special education supports and services and the inclusion model here in Selen. Um, from the para educators who, um, their dedication and their desire to, to create support, but also independence, um, for the students they, um, partner with, to, um, the teacher consultants and resource room teachers who, who stand alongside the classroom teachers. It's not a separate thing, it's really a collaborative, um, approach to things. And I know that when I was a classroom teacher here, um, that partnership meant all the difference for the way that I could do my job and, and, um, how I could teach all the kids in my classroom, so I appreciate that. The para-to-teacher cohort is so exciting, I saw some graduates-
Yeah.
Um, this year from our, from many of our paras here in the district, and I'm just really excited to see, um, their passion continue to develop and to see how they'll continue to have an impact in, um, in special spaces because of that opportunity. Um, I, I just can't thank Daisy enough, her leadership, um, as a parent, her experience that she shares, and how, um, she provides those mentors that you were talking about, how parents, um, don't feel alone and have that support and, um, just an ear, even an ear outside of the school system, somebody who's been there, somebody who's walked in those shoes, so I appreciate Daisy's willingness to step up and lead. I, I appreciate the stewardship of the finances that you've been given and how, I think that, um, you do a lot with the dollars that you're given. Um, the other districts are given the same dollars or more, and, um, it's not the same result. So I see that, and I recognize that, and, um, I know that every dollar of that millage is, um, being put to good use for our students. Um, I think, I guess I'll just say, um, I have all these things. One of my kids' biggest regrets is that unified P E didn't happen this year. They, they might come back and, uh, ask to visit that class, I'm sure, when they're home, uh, home from college, but, um, they're so excited that that's happening for their friends at the high school. I wrote down this list of names, I just, I appreciate, uh, Jody, one of the things, I know you've carried Kevin a long time and his wife back there, Beth, too, um, both in special education, but one thing that I remembered when you were standing up here, Jody, is how you have moved a time or two. And it hasn't always been, I know it hasn't always been what you've wanted, but you have done it in a way that has made such an impact on your colleagues and the students that you teach, so I appreciate that. Let's see, I'm just going to, I don't know, I'm going to forget someone, but I will say that, um, the Mussons are our neighbors. And Noah has been Drew's best friend, I think, since birth, maybe, I don't know. Drew's probably embarrassed right now. Um, but I, I think along with Drew and Noah's friendship, Laney tagged along, and when she did tag along, Kevin poured into her, and I think that really planted some seeds for her, um, and created the young woman they saw tonight. I think that connecting has created a community for my kids that they didn't expect. They have, I think the thing that keeps coming up for us is the genuine and authentic relationships that have developed from that experience, and how even the relationships, we've known Nick, I think most of his life, Nathan was in my class, his older brother, so we've known Nick a long, long time, and although we knew Nick, the depth of the friendship that has, um, created because of connecting and because of the experiences would not have been there without connecting. So I appreciate the work that you're doing for our kids who are identified in the numbers that you spoke about, but for our entire community, so thank you so much. Congratulations on your double retirement soon.
I'll go next, is that cool? All right. So first of all, uh, you heard me earlier speak to, to the parent who sought me out at soccer, and that, it's, that's a nice moment to, to be a trustee and to stand there and represent Selen, right? Like, that is, like, awesome, right? So, uh, you know, as a, as an educator, I can't help but marvel at the staffing and professional development slide, and just think about all the different areas of expertise that impact kids on a day-to-day basis, right? And so, like, I am incredibly thankful, you could work in a lot of places, your expertise would be valued and welcomed anywhere, and you work here. So, so thank you, right? Like, we have a great school district because of all of the resources and the things that we're able to pour into students. And so as a trustee, like, it run, it runs itself and it comes to my door, and it's like, yeah, we're good, that's right. But, um, but the reality is, it happens because of you, and because of your efforts, and, and because of these teammates, as you call them, and, and that really is important. It's important to me as an educator, I will tell you as an educator myself, thank you so much for the things you do in classrooms to help me to be, like, I, because it happens in my school district too, to be a better educator, right? Those things matter, right? It helps us to, to, to personalize education, it helps us to be able to provide targeted services to those students who require it, and it's important because then, when we can do that, our, our students thrive. And you're going to hear my question in a second, but, um, I want to make sure that I, I say that. And speaking to, I, 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 I don't want to go, go to my question without also stating, you young people standing back there and connecting, and if we're sitting back there and connecting, you are extraordinary. Thank you for committing to these young people, thank you for building on your own, um, you know, beliefs and understanding and love and, like, that is genuine and absolute love and support. And it is something that is an incredible point of pride, and I thank you incredibly for it. And so, speaking of evidence, thinking of connections and all of that, one of the things that we recently discussed here at the table was school choice. And, um, one of the things that I'm so thankful about is I re, and I told Dr. Lottsch this, and I've said this, that I believe that the, uh, the, that our staff is so extraordinary that the earliest the interventions we can make, the better for kids. And so for me, for us to say that we're going to target- us to say that we're gonna target and we're gonna try to say, okay, let's capture our youngest learners, I think that gives us the amount, most amount of time to show that growth. Would you echo that? Would you agree?
Yeah, definitely the earlier the better, right? We wanna capture students within that K-three range, make sure that we have evidence-based interventions implemented and, and function as a team with the families. The other thing is, is the relationships are easier to build at that early level as they come through the door. Sometimes when they get down their career and they might not have had such a great experience in other districts, we spend more time just trying to get people on the same page with, with how we're doing things. So I, I, I agree with you that the earlier the better anytime, uh, with school of choice and/or interventions for these students.
And I appreciate you being willing to, to, to share data with us. And I also really appreciate the, the mentoring piece and the, and the connection with parents. And Daisy, thanks for, for being here tonight and representing those families and those parents and all that. So thank you. It's a point of pride for me, and I've said enough. So appreciate.
So first off, I wanna thank everybody that came out here and put this presentation together. A lot of, a lot of information. And then I appreciate some of the questions that the board, uh, presented also because there was so much information, but there was a lot of, a lot more information that can be there. So I appreciate that. Um, the special education department has always been a pillar of our community and our school district. And, and I, I can't say enough about that. And, um, the connecting club and connecting program is just awesome. I think, uh, when that kinda all got created, and the involvement that students have with the other students, i- it works both ways. It, it affects both people's lives. And I think that's awesome. And the stories that we were told today i- impact that. Um, and so, and then as far as emails, I did email you earlier.
Yes.
And I appreciate your response. It was kind of in, in reference to the Positive Prevention Plus program and the FOIA request that we were getting on the opt-out and how you're working with this, the parents on that. And I appreciate the transparency in that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we've had wonderful parent meetings so far. We've been able to bring parents and to show them the curriculum directly, uh, you know, with Monica and I being there. Uh, looking at our future, we've, we've talked about, you know, what else can we do? What else can we do better? And, uh, we're thinking about, right now, we wanna have one of our teachers, who could even be here right now, she's behind me, uh, demonstrate teaching these lessons. So parents can actually see it. Watch a video. Be able to come in and actually see how that would look. We have to be cautious with the observations, although we've done them. Uh, we, we do wanna be cautious with, uh, the students inside of that classroom and their needs in particular. So it's, it's kind of a fine line that we're walking right now, but I think we've been able to get things worked out for, for everybody.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then I also wanna thank you on your second retirement. And I appreciate you coming back
Thank you.
And filling this gap for us. Thanks.
Appreciate you.
Perhaps you'll get it right this time, right? Susan, you have more to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to make short follow-up, um, with the, the data, um, that I'd brought up with Equity, um, to make sure that Steve will get us that information, um, hopefully share it with the public. And, um, I think it would be good for the diversity and Equity, um, Advisory Committee, um, to know, um, as well. Um, and hopefully you all, um, have results from, um, you know, our Equity and District surveys, um, that have happened as well. So you can kind of get some of that, um, feedback about how students. So for an example, um, I know as far as inclusive curriculum, um, students with disabilities, um, that was like a high number, that we needed more of that in the curriculum. Um, so, you know, information like that's super helpful for you all to consider as well. So, and, you know, that's available and everything, but I just wanted to put that up as our data sharing and...
Sure.
Sounds good. All right. Did we go over our ten-minute mark? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I always wanted to come up here and get a red card, just so I could say it.
Mateo, our student representative does have something to add as well?
Oh, boy.
Well, I just first wanna say, thanks to Ms. Fair. She does so much for the connecting program with setting up bowling and the basketball game, which was probably one of the most fun things ever. And I'm excited to see all the unified stuff that she has planned, 'cause that stuff sounds super cool. And a question for Mr. Musson. Um, will you be bowling with us this Friday? And if so, do you think you'll be able to bowl above a sixty?
Yes, I am planning on coming there. Is, if there's bumpers, Mateo, if there's bumpers, I got a shot at beating a sixty. Besides that, forget about it.
Well, I just wanna thank you and the team, really, everybody who came tonight and spoke. Thank you so much on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bravo. All right, we have, um, three discussion items coming up. And I, I, you saw me getting up. I was double-checking that we had the presentation. Let me get the clicker.
I, I went to the meeting. Oops.
You went to the presentation, uh, Secretary Miller. I really appreciate that. All right, I'm gonna click, click, and click. And I can think I can do this in under four minutes. You know, every time I say that, there's always somebody goes, and I'm looking at you, Caroline. There's somebody who's going, all right, we'll see about that. Oh, my gosh, please don't. Uh, last month, I lost my own presentation. Here, hang on a second. Gotta call it up. It doesn't matter. I'll use this one. Last month, Brian Marcel of the Washtenaw Intermediate School District gave a presentation providing an overview of the WISD budget. Now, according to Michigan's revised school code, the general fund budget of the WISD must be reviewed by school boards from each district in the county. The WISD shares the budget with us each May, and board members have until the end of the month to review and respond to it. At the end of our review, we will adopt a resolution in the next few minutes to support or disapprove it. If any board member would like to submit specific budget objections in writing through an email to me, I will attach those to a response to the WISD and send it by the end of next week. The WISD board will review all notes from districts at their next board meeting. I think I'm synced up still. I wanna take a moment to note what the WISD does with their funding. They provide, uh, commu, uh, support countywide network connectivity, school data, and among other things, support for PowerSchool. The WISD offers many learning series for certified staff across the district and supports several learning networks. They also offer additional instructional supports across the county. I'll just hold there for a moment. So this slide and the next indicate many of their professional learning opportunities, both for educators and for youth, including DEI efforts, STEM-related efforts, and assistance with many, uh, special populations, including the chronically absent. They also engage in community and school partnerships with a focus on student health and wellness. So additionally, something we learned about at last year's meeting about this time was that they support the My Future Fund, which is a children's saving account program, which is pretty cool. And finally, the funds they receive support school and student safety initiatives and training. So now, in comparison, we are talking about this in finance, the, uh, general education budget is much less than the special education budget. And it should be noted that they have set an annual goal of maintaining a fund balance of approximately three million in the special ed budget and almost five million dollars in the general education budget. So here is a brief snapshot of the revenues for the general fund, sources in millions of dollars. The smallest amount, under two million, comes from state operations. While the majority, almost fifteen, comes from, uh, restricted grants at the state level. Changes from last year include, uh, an increase in property taxes, which is good, an increase in state funding, and transfers to pay for a career technical education director in Mr. Dr. Rowe. This conservative budget assumes there's no grant revenue carried over to a twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, year, although some of that grant money might. Expenditure changes include the funding for the career technical education director and the inclusion of a business services position due to increased need. Um, getting close to the end, expenditures also assume that all vacancies are filled, uh, all step increases are made, and that there is a two percent salary increase. And also that healthcare costs have increased by about four and a half percent. So this is a snapshot of the general fund balance in millions of dollars. We use percentages here, but, uh, millions of dollars. And their balance, uh, they dipped into their balance just a wee bit this year. Each year, the original amount i- is assumed at a much more conservative amount than the actual amount. So if you see the negatives there, uh, that's the, um, if I got this right, the final actual amount of the budget is in blue. Uh, and usually it's above their estimated amounts. So, um, basically, the presentation has changed very little. In fact, the graphics are still old and tired, uh, but I, I liked the special ed graphics a lot better. Uh, I would like to entertain a motion at this moment to support the WISD twenty-four, twenty-five budget resolution as submitted, based on this presentation.
Support, Miller. Or I guess motion, Miller.
Okay. Are you gonna move? JM, thank you.
Support, Gold.
Thank you very much, Lauren Gold. Uh, are there any discussions? If you have any questions, again, please, because I, I didn't, address them to Jenny. She was actually there. I, I just have the notes at the PowerPoint. Uh, but if you have any questions, we'll try our best to answer them.
One, one thing I'll just add that I was very impressed with, and I'm, I know it's something that we talk a lot about, um, at our table with our district budget. But, um, the ISD is also, uh, continuing to maintain, uh, a relatively healthy fund equity balance, which I think is important. And really also, when you do have that healthy fund equity balance, it shows the, um, integrity of the budget as a whole, I believe. So, um, looking at how their dollars are spent and, um, the collaboration across the county, I think is, is, um, a really, uh, it's a model for others. So...
I've worked a lot with the folks up at, um, WISD, and, uh, they're, they're extraordinarily professional staff. And, um, I, I really appreciate, I agree with you a hundred percent. Any other comments? No? Yep. Tim?
I just wanna say, I, I like the, um, increased spending with the CTE and so forth and giving the opportunity to other students that maybe are not part of the consortium program here. Uh, would like to see maybe down the road, maybe a little bit of information given to us about what the impact they've had on these other schools and stuff, and maybe a report out on that somehow. I think that'd be, that's kinda what I'm asking.
Well, thank you. It's been noted. And I, I don't think that deserves a, a note to the, to them about the budget, but, uh, we'll, we're on it. We're on it. Dr. Dr. Lottz is on it. Great. Well, let's put this to a vote, then. Uh, all in favor of supporting the WISD twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five budget resolution as submitted? Please say aye.
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 Oppose? Hearing none. Six-oh. Thank you so much. Uh, Betty will fill the document out and move along. Uh, we're owing, over now to Brad Gerby on the finance committee update.
All right. Uh, finance committee met at five o'clock today. We had five items that were discussion items for us, and we covered the following grounds. On the first one, we, was it, is it MDE-required, uh, food service rebidding. The action will happen in June. Every five years, we are required to, by the state, through a various prescript, prescriptive process to, uh, to bid that out. And that will come to our district as an action item in June. Um, one of the points of pride right now for us is how awesome our food service is. And right now for us, if we look at our overall budget, um, food service is a, um, we are not supporting it through the general fund right now. So that is a positive for our overall school, um, budget. But if we needed to, that would be what we would have to do. And, and we would be prepared to, to have that conversation as a finance team. Uh, we talked, um, the next two items kind of almost tie together hand in hand. Uh, the governor, the House, and the Senate are starting to, to put out budgets. They're starting to talk about, like, things. And, and that's good because we will have to set our, um, budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year by June thirtieth. So first of all, I guess I would say at six PM on June eleventh, we would invite the public and I hope, invite the board to participate in our annual budget hearing. So again, that will happen on June eleventh at six, uh, PM. Couple of highlights that are there and some things that are gonna be reflected in both our original, uh, budget for twenty-twenty-five as well as the final amendment. Uh, we're getting a little more clarity with regards to per pupil allotment and any potential increase. Uh, on the low end, there's a two-hundred-and-seventeen-dollar increase. The high end is three-hundred-and-two. Uh, so we're gonna budget right now on two-seventeen. And, and if it comes in higher than that, we'll always be, be happy about that. Um, so that's about three-hundred-and-nine-thousand additional dollars that would come to the district. And it is higher than our original projection, which our original projection was gonna be, um, an increase of one-hundred-and-fifty dollars per student. So, so overall, like, as far as, you know, affects our budget, that, that looks good. Um, so one, another highlight for me is, um, and this is gonna, remember, it's like, uh, it's, it's a big horse trade and it's not done yet, right? So like, there are priorities that the House has and the Senate has and the governor, and they gotta figure some of those details out about who, you know, what's spending and what have you. But, um, some positive things is the MIPSers, which is what we pay for, uh, for, for retirements and pensions, um, is, is looking as healthy as it's ever looked. And in fact, the healthcare portion of it is even running, um, like, excess revenue. It's, it's, um, it's about, I think it was forty, forty million dollars or was that? It's, it's, it's over a hundred and forty percent. That's it. Yeah, okay. Thank you. I knew there was a forty in there. So it looks, so in that regard, that's positive and that's good. And so there are gonna be some conversations about now, how, what do we do with, with that money? And how do we be, you know, good tax, or, you know, spend our taxpayers' money, um, well? Um, and the last thing I have, which is also, um, a positive thing with regards to, um, potential for our district, is that enrollment right now in kindergarten is, is looking pretty, pretty solid. Um, it looks as good. We, we're seeing a general trend, um, that people are tending to enroll and go through kindergarten roundups and those kinds of things earlier than, and that really helps the district. Uh, and I guess I'd put an appeal to any kindergarten families out there. It really helps us to, to, you know, develop staffing. It helps us to understand about, you know, what we need, the decisions we need to make from a structural standpoint. But right now, we anticipate that kindergarten enrollment, um, will, will be up. And so that is always a good thing, right? More money and more students equals, uh, greater financial footing for the district. So, uh, those were the items. We talked about the, the bond stuff we talked about earlier, and, and that was our, uh, our meeting, unless my compadres on the team have other things to add.
I did not. We gonna meet next month?
So we are. We're gonna meet next month, 'cause next month's kind of a big one for us, right? That the June meeting is, like I said, uh, the budget hearing. And then we will, um, we will, we will, we will rest upon that in July. So we'll come back together in August.
Thank you. That was it? Thanks very much. Signed, signed, sealed. Yeah, right. Any questions for? All right. The next, uh, item on the agenda is a brief dis, I, I don't know if it's gonna be brief or not. We'll see. Uh, it's a process for how the board seeks legal advice, which, uh, we, in fact, what I have is a two-page write-up, and I'm happy to give that out to everybody, uh, after the meeting as well, uh, based on the notes that I received from everybody. I gathered together a number of policies and to try and sort out the questions. So here we go. Uh, at the April twenty-third Board of Education meeting, uh, Trustee East had made an inquiry, and I'm taking this from, uh, the, the minutes from our last meeting. Uh, what is the process, what, what is, hang on, what is the process for the board to contact legal if there is a concern or complaint with superintendent or board member, or when a serious concern is brought to the board, or if there's potential liability issues for the board as it impacts the district and the community? Trustee East up also noted that there should be no issue with a board member asking questions and asking that legal has input in determining what the step, next step should be. I absolutely agree. So, under the heading now of asking for legal services, as a reminder to the community, Celineary Schools uses two legal firms, Troon Law Firm and Collins &amp; Blaha, who assist with clarifying broader legal issues regarding policies that guide this board. They can also offer advice regarding next steps. So who reaches out to them? The board president speaks on behalf of the board. Um, and it's, sometimes I have designated the superintendent to ask a particular question of, uh, our legal services. So there are two big issues, two big pots to consider. One is policies, and the other are complaints. So let's talk about the policies first. So if there's a question about policy, historically the board, through the board president- So if there's a question about policy, historically, the board, through the board president, has reached out to legal services, and sometimes a superintendent has proactively reached out. One recent example was over the display of certain flags in schools. If an individual board member wants to raise a question about policy, they should bring it to the policy committee. In the Board Operating Procedure, that's 0131.1. And under Development and Updates, number four, said the chair of the policy committee or the superintendent can formulate the question with the help of the board for legal services. Policy committee can also reach out to the board's Neola representative. Now, under the next big bucket, Concerns and Complaints. If there is a concern or a complaint, these have to be addressed in closed session of the board. From my understanding, that's policy 0167.2, closed sessions. And it's quoted, "The board, by means of a roll call vote, can meet in closed session, one closed to the public for the following purposes." And the first one is the one that's relevant. "To consider the dismissal, suspension, or disciplining of, or to hear complaints or charges brought against, or to consider a periodic personnel evaluation of a public officer, staff member, or individual agent if the named person requests a closed hearing." Majority vote is required. So if a complaint's addressed in closed session, then the board can discuss at the time the advisability of seeking help from legal services. Board member can make the case about the advisability of contacting legal services. So action can then be brought by the whole board. I think we, I'm not sure if we have to vote outside closed session, if we're gonna go for legal services or not, or we can just make a decision. We'll have to see that. Probably to cross the Ts and dot the Is, we should vote outside of closed session. If a member of the public has a complaint about the superintendent, there is a public complaint process, that's policy 9130. All complaints, all complaints need to begin with discussions with the superintendent or administrators. If they're not, oh, sorry, with the superintendent. If they're not resolved, then the complainant may file a formal complaint with the vice president of the board. If necessary, the board would go into closed session to determine next steps. The next steps could mean contacting legal services for advice. If a board member raises an issue or concern that, or amplifies a concern raised by a member of the public, our Board Operating Procedure, I'm looking at 1210, basically says, under Board Superintendent Relationship, suggests that it begin with a discussion, always begins with a discussion between the parties and relates to oversight of the superintendent. Or by contacting the board president to address these concerns or questions. As with all other procedures for addressing complaints, they begin with discussions between the key parties. That's what I've been able to gather from all of the different policies. And I think perhaps a section in the Board Operating Procedure should maybe tie all these things together and make it really clear step by step. So if I've missed a step or overlooked something, now's your chance to share your insight. And I hope, I hope Susan, that helped you, I took you, I took you, that you wanted a sense of the process to clarify, for clarity. And that's what I hope I was able to provide.
Can you go back, I just?
Yes, I know I read this, I didn't get a chance to print it out for everyone.
Yeah, and I'm aware of, like, all of these policies. But yeah, tying it all together makes sense. You had mentioned, I'm sorry, I missed, outside of the public complaint, which is the public, not board members, to follow that process. You had mentioned one of the bylaws, and I don't, it was early on, 01 something, something.
That's the policy about making policies, yeah.
Okay, what did you mention about that?
That was regarding if we, if an individual board member wanted to challenge or raise a question about policy. When do we get legal input on that? That was what that section was about. Was it about the complaints section, you had a question?
So I guess it's still not clear to me, 'cause you had mentioned the closed session component. So if one or two board members are curious and brought up that we need, as a board, to contact legal, right? They're requesting that to follow whatever process. Is that something that comes to a closed session, or?
That's a good question, and from everything I've been able to see from our policies, that if there's any, well, it depends on if it's regarding a complaint. Then we go into closed session because it deals with a complaint, at which point, if a couple of board members say, we really have to seek legal services support for this, then we sort of discuss that in closed session, and maybe phrase, behind closed session, we'll frame the question, what it is we're looking for, because we wanna get best bang for our buck if we're contacting legal. But that's the sense that I got. I didn't see it any other situation where a board member can just raise it, because it's either, we're either talking about policies or dealing with complaints. So if there's a third category or bucket of concerns, I haven't seen it yet, I don't, and I may have missed it, so.
So it not being, the complaint not necessarily coming from a person of the public?
But from a board member?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Or about a board member, like?
Oh, well, then, phrase your question, 'cause I'm not quite sure I'm getting it, and if anyone can help.
I, no, I thought, I thought you mentioned, you, it's part of my question about a board member or superintendent.
Well, then, see, that's another thing that's unclear. We, there is a process for complaints for the superintendent, and you had asked also in your question, which had a lot of elements in it, what if there's a concern with a board member? Okay, we do have a section in the Board Operating Policies if one would want to raise a complaint against another board member. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, that has nothing to do with legal.
Right, 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 right. So that's what I'm asking you to clarify what you're asking me right now, that's all.
So, and to be clear, 'cause I think everybody's getting confused about what the Board Operating Procedures are, that they are procedures, right? It's not necessarily the policy. I feel like the BOP is getting elevated when we have policies to go back on. So I wanna make that clear. I'm not asking about that. Whenever we, regardless of what it is, for example, you mentioned the flags in schools. As a recent, I don't, I don't remember, what was that process? I, I'm not sure I know what you're talking about with that.
A member of the public started the discussion with the superintendent and the board by sending a letter, probably with several members of the public, to SAS Board. And in order to clarify it, the superintendent sent a message, sent a note to, was it Troon or Collins &amp; Blaha, one of those companies, saying, what's, so what is the actual policy regarding flags in the classroom, this particular flag, or whatever flags? I forget what the issue was exactly. And that's, that's how that happened. And that informed, I think it went to policy committee afterwards, or it was, or was relayed back to the board, or relayed back to the parent. I'm not really sure what happened at the end of that.
That's a parent requesting legal.
That was a.
Community members requesting legal.
No, they didn't, no, they had a question about the policy. Hey, how come flag X can be flown in my kid's classroom? If you can, because you might remember it better.
If this is recent, I'm not even aware.
Within the last year.
Well, there were a number of parents that expressed concern, and they asked me, are we violating the policy, a policy, to have Black Lives Matter flags in teachers' classroom? I sought a legal opinion from Troon, and they said, we are not violating a policy by having Black Lives Matter flags in the classroom.
So by giving that as an example, that was something that's probably not an example that came from this, from us, no.
Yeah, exactly.
So I appreciate that, yeah. But we have issues that have come before the policy committee, and have gone up to legal, and we've crafted and framed the right questions and then sent it up, right? So perhaps you as the policy chair.
So a couple things. One is, I would like you to share that document you've created there, so I can kinda read it and kinda digest it a little bit. The other thing is, so I'm kinda gathering there's, if a, the difference between going to closed session to look for legal opinion versus just kind of in a policy committee coming up and going to seek legal opinion, I think there's two different things there. But I do agree kinda with Susan that maybe there is maybe not clarity in how, yeah, we have a, we have a policy and how we're, if there's a concern from a parent or stakeholder has against administration or superintendent, there's a policy, or there's a way of going about that. From a board member's standpoint, is it clear? I don't think that that's very clear. And so maybe, I don't know if that can be clarified in the existing policy that we are talking about with our complaints from stakeholders? Or if that has to be a different policy, I'm not sure. I guess that's what I'd like to know.
No, that's good, and all these things need clarification. So what I'm gonna recommend is, because I only just drafted this this afternoon, just as we were walking in, I had a wet printed copy. So obviously, it requires some input from everybody on this board. So what I'd like to do, if I could recommend this now, and maybe we can move to or close the discussion at this, is let me give you the, what I think is a pretty good two-pager that clarifies your questions. And perhaps, you know, later we can embed this into the Board Operating Policy. And we'll take a couple of weeks to look it over and double check and triple check. 'Cause I mean, I don't wanna put anyone on the spot for saying, yes, this is right or wrong, is it just McVay's gathering stuff together? The other thing that Susan, you just mentioned was about elevating the Board Operating Procedure. I have been working throughout the summer, actually, very slowly at dragging the Board Operating Procedure, going through every aspect of it, and making sure that everything that's there relates to actual board policy, exactly, and it needs to. The Board Operating Procedures are, here's the policy, here's how we're gonna take it out and make it work as best as it follows the policy. There are some really tricky spots, like how we're in the organizational meeting. How, in fact, Jenny Miller had raised way back, how do we review replacement candidates for the board if somebody steps down? It's very vague, it's very wide open, and I'm, I feel nervous when we said, we must do the following eight things. Well, I want, I agree with you, Susan, they need to be based on policy. So let me, let me just say this, let me give this to you all over the next couple days, or, well, this evening. Yeah, oh, there's still questions up here, but let me give this to you in the next couple days, and address any questions that have come up right now. And I'll see if I can tidy that up, give it to you, and then you can edit away in a Google Doc or something. Or we'll figure out a way to do, no, we can't do it, I'll give you each of them, if you have notes, bring them to me, and we'll work it out. Yeah, I know, sorry, Susan, quite right. Lauren Gold, Dr. Gold.
Okay, so the question I have is that I don't even really know what the question is. So I just wanna try to understand. So you would ask for a lawyer when you had a legal question, correct? Any person would ask for a lawyer when they had a question regarding the law, or a complaint regarding a law not being followed, correct?
You're talking about in general public?
Because it's just as, I can't make sense of what the actual question is. So it's clear to me that we have a policy for if the public complains about the superintendent or files a complaint, that we have a policy, et cetera. It's clear, maybe, that if a board member has a concern about the superintendent, we can go into closed session. I think, but I'm not sure, that what Trustee Eastip is asking is, is there a policy for if one board member has a concern about another board member going that way? Or if the superintendent has a concern about the board member? I just wanna know what the two part, I just really don't, I'm like flummoxed as to what the actual question is.
Sure.
I'm sorry. I can read this two-page document, but I don't understand what the, if we're even anywhere in the ballpark of what Trustee has to.
This is a good opportunity for Susan to clarify the question.
Well, yeah, I can actually read what Betty and I made sure that I captured, or that we captured in the minutes, which we approved earlier. So maybe that'll help from last, last time. So I inquired on what the process is for the board to contact legal if there is a concern or complaint of a superintendent or board member, or when a serious concern is brought to the board, or if there's potential liabilities issues for the board as it impacts the district, the community. Also, if one or more board members ask for legal input, how does that happen? They said the board has autonomy, this is per policy, to contact legal counsel. Would a board member have to go through the public complaint process, which I think, hopefully, we all agree that that's not how that would work, to address concerns from community or board members? And then, yeah, there should be no issue with a board member asking questions and asking that legal has input in determining what next steps would be. So yeah, just wanting clarification. So nothing to do with a complaint about, nothing to do with that Board Operating Procedure.
So what I thought I heard President McVay say is that if somebody wanted legal, the procedure is to go to the president to ask for that, the board president. How does the board president decide?
Well, the board president doesn't have sole authority to make decisions on that type of thing.
That's right, and neither does an individual, so.
Exactly, so how do we do the process?
So this is what, this is what this two-pager suggests, that if you have a concern, and maybe we have to say rather than a complaint or a policy issue, that we still have to just, I'm sorry. Then rather than go through, we may just have to go through closed session every time, because some of the issues that we're talking about might be extraordinarily sensitive, either regarding an individual board member, or an individual in the district, or the superintendent. This is why I think, going back to closed session, 167.2, to any time we're dealing with issues of a sensitive nature like that, then a closed session is the right place. At which point, I think, then we decide, then an individual board member can make their cases to whether we should go and get support for legal, if the policies aren't clear enough.
I think that, I think that's tricky as far as what we can go into closed session for. I know a person would have to request, if it was a complaint about them, they would have to request that it be private, or be in closed session.
That's exactly what I read, yes.
Otherwise, public.
That's exactly what I read, correct.
Yes, but I think that's outside of what, I guess, I'm asking if, for example, the flag, I think previously, you had a question similar, I'm talking about Trustee Austin in the past, a former board, and had a question that came up about, you know, flags and signs and stuff, and that was, you know, it sought at a later time as well. But, you know, it was one individual, like you had brought it up, and then the superintendent brought us, actually in closed session, to answer that question. So that's where that happened, that was the process that happened all the time, seemed like with Superintendent Graydon, when there was legal that came through, and that's something that we could do in closed session. But prior to that point, you know, if we don't have the legal advice. So I'm just looking at conflict of interest of if we don't necessarily, if it's involving, you know, district admin, not necessarily wanting the superintendent to do that, or the superintendent not, you know, I, that's just my question as far as like the conflict, and also as far as a board member. If, you know, somebody's seeking advice on that, that should be, you know, the board, right? Taking that role. So that's kind of my, you know, I mean, it could be a variety of things, that there would be a conflict or information that we would want to go to the process, 'cause yeah, we can't make, you know, we could speak for the board, right? Publicly, or, you know, and state that, but we can't take action without it being here. Like, the board takes action, right, at the board table.
Right, and just before, so before we get to Brad, and that action is to seek legal advice possibly. And as I heard you say a few times, an individual board member can't do it, we have to do it as a board. Brett?
Yes, and we had that discussion, that was not even last meeting, but maybe a couple of months ago, the spring, we had that. We had kind of this similar discussion about seeking legal and, yeah.
So if I could just say then, it seems like basically after reading the policies, the only mechanism that we have to discuss sensitive issues like that is to go into closed session and have a discussion, and then the. And then the sausage gets made, so to speak, in closed session, that's when we make the decision to move or not. I don't see any other mechanism that a board or this board has at their disposal right now, but if you all, with your big minds, can find a better, clearer way, I'm looking forward to hearing about it. But speaking of big minds, Brett?
A couple of things. So yeah, I think the biggest question over four years now has been, if I wanted to have legal services sought, right, how much quote-unquote power, influence, whatever word, to request those kinds of things, right? And I would say that like, for me, it comes down to a preponderance of us, right? So I don't know if I want to go into closed session every time that we talk about wanting legal services, I think what we do is we discuss it, and then if we want to have a motion made to, you know, request legal opinion on it, and then four people want to vote for that, I guess that's where I would lie on that. And then the other thing, the other, this is just an idea, take it or leave it, put it wherever, put it on the list, it would be, you know, we have a, we have a person who's like our, a Title IX coordinator for the district, right, somebody who like takes those things and manages them and makes recommendations. I don't know if that would be something that the board could consider, but maybe we consider having someone who is our like mediator or our individual, who is independent of us, and would make a decision about if that was, if it had validity. I don't know, I'm trying to think of a way to like, because I think what trustee Eastup is saying is, if we have a conflict of interest with regards to the legal complaint, then four of us might have a trouble with a preponderance in that case. And so then, who do we provide that authority to, is my point?
Brett?
I don't know.
It sounds like you presented the seeds of a potentially a new policy.
I don't know. Just, just an idea.
Tim and Jenny both put their fingers at the same time.
Okay, I mean, I just think that you share your, the information you came up with, I mean, it seems like this is a spaghetti bowl of stuff, all kind of intertwined, and because one thing I don't want to do is I don't want to limit or prolong any kind of seeking legal help either. So I don't want to, okay, we gotta wait till the second Tuesday of the month, or the fourth Tuesday of the month to have a closed session, or a meet, a talk here to get four votes. I mean, if it's a policy issue, a lot of times, back when we were on the board, you know, back when Scott was the superintendent, and I think this is still the same with Steve, if a board member has something, or a couple of board members have something that they think that we should look at legal, it's not just, we're requesting it, the superintendent also feels that there should be legal sought as well. So therefore, I think, we don't want to, you know, have to wait for a meeting to do that and slow something down, but I do think that there is some clarity needing to be made, I guess, around what I feel is more the direct question of how the, how a board member would seek legal if they had an issue with a board member, or a superintendent, or administration. I think that's where, that's where I think we would need to probably go into closed session, or there needs to be more clarity on that. That's what I see. So I think if we can get the paperwork that you've already created, and thank you for doing that, Michael, and let us kind of digest it a little bit.
Of course.
That'd be helpful.
Okay, I just, a couple of things. One, I appreciate that you pulled those together, I know that, I know that I had been looking through board operating procedures and policies to kind of get, to kind of wrap my mind around it too. So I appreciate that you put it all in one spot, so that I don't have, you know, 80 tabs open on my computer. Second, I think that, you know, we've had some ideas here tonight around potentially even creating new policy, either separate or in conjunction with board operating procedure, and I just want to remind everyone that at any point, any trustee can make a recommendation to the policy committee. So if you want to craft a policy and bring that to the policy committee for consideration, that is an option. And finally, I'm not sure, I guess I'm just going to call a spade a spade. I'm not sure if this, I'm not sure if this discussion, or the purpose for this discussion, was because there isn't clarity in how to seek a legal opinion, or if there are issues that are currently happening. And I do think that we have a mechanism for, like Michael said, having, starting with those discussions, person-to-person first, and then moving forward in the, in the process, which could include a closed session. I want to be really, I want to be really clear that from my perspective in reading the policies, and in having a chance to kind of think about this, I think that there needs to be a system of checks and balances, so that there isn't an individual seeking a legal opinion apart from the board unless they are financially paying for that themselves. And I also think that we need to be really careful that we are not, that we are representing the school district and our community, and not personal agendas or vendettas.
So person, okay, if you're talking about, it sounds like other conversa, she's not.
General.
But you said something current, like I have no idea, like.
I don't know if there's something currently going on. I went back and watched the past several board meetings to try to figure out if there was something that I didn't know, and I went back and read policy and procedure to try to put together an answer to the question that I still am not 100% clear on.
Yeah, and I don't think, I think I made it clear that it's not an individual board member like making that decision, the board can do it. We've had those, again, those conversations in the past multiple times, I've asked about this process. And so, yeah, I don't think it's like an individual board member asking to make that decision, right? And it's simply asking for legal advice, right? So when you were talking about Title IX as someone, it's simply asking the advice, right, putting a problem or a concern in front of the lawyer to help the board, right? That's what it is, right? That's, that's what come up. And so, it sounds like we don't have a clear process.
Can I ask for clarification on that? Because this is where I don't, this is where I get lost. You would like to have an individual board member say, I have a concern, I want to seek legal advice on this issue? Okay, because that's what I'm misunderstanding, because that's what it sounds like. It sounds like what you're saying is that an individual trustee raises a concern, and that that should go immediately to legal for a lawyer's advice. So if I'm misunderstanding, this is what I keep coming back to.
Well, when we're, when multiple board members are hearing about concerns, right, and the president, or any other officer, doesn't have the authority to act on things, right, could give resources, I think that's great, to give community members, you know, the resources of public complaints, right? So, you know, that's shared information, and the board having that information and saying, hey, guys, like, maybe we should, you know, put this to legal as far as, you know, this is a concern that has come up. So it's not an individual specifically asking for their legal, legal purpose for any other, like, it's come up, right? So I don't, I don't understand.
So I guess, I guess my, my thinking on this is that if a complaint has been raised by a member of the public, it's my understanding that a trustee could come to a meeting and say, a complaint has been raised, I'd like to make a motion for us to seek legal opinion on this, and then the board can vote. But when things are happening in email, and not in public, this is where I think all of us start to like not say anything in the emails, because that would be violating OMA. So when a complaint comes up in an email, that's one thing, but then I think that we need to then say, I'd like for this to be added to an agenda, or I'd like to make a motion that this happen.
And that happened last time, but it was not added to the agenda.
The, this discussion item, not the motion to seek legal opinion.
That could have come out of the discussion, but what happened, there was action taken prior to that point anyways, so. And we do have a policy.
Based on, based on the policies that we had, which was to initiate a discussion, that's the action that was taken.
But it was a legal concern that.
It was a concern that it might be a legal concern.
Yeah.
The motion was never made, that I have this, I have X concern, and I would like to seek legal opinion.
We can't do that by email, right? And that's why.
No, that's, but at the meeting, you're saying that we shut you down from moving forward in the discussion. No one knew what that discussion was involving, so no one could make the motion to move it forward. At least, speaking from me personally, I didn't understand it, and typically, when things are added to an agenda, the board member contacts the president to ask for something to be scheduled on an agenda. When something comes up, there's, there's an un, I guess it's a spoken rule, but maybe unwritten rule with M A S B, that there are no surprises at the board table. So when something like that comes to the board table, when there's an item that's wanting to be added to the agenda, and it's, and for me, it's not clear what that item is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to move that forward on that agenda without further understanding.
It was brought to the board on a Friday, stating that we should have a discussion on it. There was discussion outside of legal to say, let's do this, and that is a violation, to have that conversation, so that's why the conversation needed to happen at the table, right? That came up.
You didn't ask for that specific conversation, you asked for, what is the mechanism for seeking legal? You did not say, I have this concern, I would like to contact legal.
Yes, I spelled it out, as far as what the concern is.
Well, I'm speaking for myself, I did not understand what that motion was, so.
Okay, the public can have, can do for you if they want.
If you're referring to that original email, to get any further past the initial assumption that was raised in the first couple paragraphs, or first paragraph, based on a concern from a member of the public, that would have required deliberation about that issue via email, which we weren't in any position to do. At the end, you said you wanted, you would ask that we approach legal regarding whatever the particular issue was. But by the end of that email, what had started as an assumption has turned into a concern about a liability, First Amendment rights, et cetera, et cetera. And the whole thing was, it wasn't, if I had seen in my conversations with the superintendent and Jackie, some, an issue, that it was exactly how you spelled it out in the worst-case scenario, I would have called a special meeting to say, we need to address this right now because it can't happen.
So you have that decision.
Because it would have been a complaint against the superintendent, and we would have decided at that point that we need to go to legal for advice, and here's how we'll phrase the question, as a board, and that's how I understood it. That's why nothing happened, you weren't being ignored, the conversation could not happen via email, that's all there is.
First email, President McVeigh, I'm asking you to contact independent legal counsel for the board regarding the legality and ethics of these actions. I'm gonna skip.
Of these actions, and the actions being that you thought somebody was being censured by the superintendent, correct?
Yes, because we were contacted multiple times.
You thought that an individual thought they were being censored.
And so I said it was in a conflict of interest, for the superintendent to be involved in this process, and I said, per policy, it's within the board's purview to specifically consult legal counsel, because we have a policy on it regarding this very serious matter. And then I said, if you find it necessary for a board member to make a motion in order for this action to occur, I'm more willing to do that at the board meeting on Tuesday, that was Friday.
Right, now we can stop at that point, because you had said that this has, that the board has to ask legal, not an individual, not the president.
Yes, exactly, I didn't say individual.
Not an individual, not an individual, and not the president.
Yeah, exactly.
So Superintendent Latch would like to add.
If the complaint is against me, shouldn't somebody tell me what the complaint is? I'm unaware of the complaint.
Which is why a closed session would have been appropriate.
Okay, and where, how do we get to that process?
That's all written in this document that I'm gonna share with you tonight or tomorrow.
And, and a board member.
And it's all in the policies, pardon me for interrupting you, it's all in the policies. Policy regarding closed sessions, if there's a concern for discussion, we go into closed session.
You might want to look into OMA with that.
What?
You throw these things around, like you know more than everyone, explain. Don't just throw these things out.
I'm not, I'm reading to you.
I'm reading.
I'm reading.
You don't know OMA, explain.
Straight from email.
I'm reading the, I'm reading the policy to consider. Right, so, as I had said earlier, I'm happy to give this document to you all, I'm happy to have you add comments to it that could end up as either new policies or part of the board operating procedure. I don't know if reviewing that particular instance right now, I really did not want to litigate that, that email at this point. If you have a concern about the way I addressed it, that's, that's your, there are probably remedies in there, but at this point, I don't want to, I don't think this board should be relitigating, or even talking about that particular issue, because on the agenda right now is a discussion about the process. And if you want to speak in generalities, great, but if you want to speak in specifics, probably it's, it's not very helpful.
And, and I think if you can just share that document with all of us, and then we can kind of.
Yeah, if you got, bring it up at a future board meeting, or two or three from now, whenever, whatever.
Yep.
And OMA, it's Open Meetings Act through the state of Michigan.
I know what Open Meetings Act is, but when you say, you might want to look into Open Meetings Act with that issue, explain what you mean.
Yes, I.
Don't just throw out that.
Yes, because in Open Meetings Act, as we all know, there are specific items that a board may meet in closed session for. So that's why I was saying, let's check that. Are you able to do that for, you know, considering something when we haven't contacted legal? Like, we can go in closed session if we have like a legal opinion, right? Or about security, like there's very specific things, I'm, I'm saying check into it, I'm not, I mean, I could sit here and read it.
No, I appreciate that clarity.
I just read it to you.
I just want to make sure that when we throw out things like, you might want to check OMA, that we clarify what we're checking it about, because sometimes it appears as if you're like saying, please check OMA on that, and sometimes it appears as if you're throwing out that, that everyone is violating OMA except you. So thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
It's about legal advice, yes.
Thank you. I, I don't even know where my agenda is now, thanks. If you don't mind now, please, we left with an issue that I will gladly send this document to us all for comments and additions and tally them up. Thank you very much. Administration Board Updates, Dr. Latch.
Okay, I have two, and one involves Caroline Clark. So there were the 2024 MEPA Awards, Michigan Interscholastic Press Association, and there were lots of our students that received a number of awards. Caroline is, was second place for the Celinean, for Celine High School, in her feature writing involving sports. So that is great.
Very good.
And then, another thing just in that Jackie shared with me, which is, is great, first I want to acknowledge Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, and also Jewish American Heritage Month. So a freelance reporter writing with the Detroit Jewish News contacted Jackie as she was compiling an article about how Washtenaw County school districts were acknowledging Jewish American Heritage Months in schools and classrooms. And after sharing a summary of our efforts through social media, bulletin boards, digital displays, choice boards, recommended books, guest speakers, and so forth, the reporter shared with Jackie that Celine has the most robust programming that she has seen in acknowledging of the month. So Jackie and myself want to thank our equity teams, teachers, and principals, who help us demonstrate our commitment to diversity and inclusion across the district. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll just make a quick note, I was at the Future Farmers of America Potluck last night, their 87th, and I tell you, it is, if you've ever, if you've never been to their potluck, please consider going the next time. I know you were there last year, right, Tim? Best potluck on, well, in, in Washtenaw, let's just, let's not go over the top, right? Thank you.
Okay, I just have two quick updates. Me and Mateo had the opportunity to meet with the Celine Alumni Association, with a lot of the other leaders in our class, so it was super cool for them to reach out, to support us and help us after we graduate. Also, yesterday, student council, the seniors had their last student council meeting ever, which was super cool, and we just wanted to thank the juniors for planning prom that will be happening on Saturday.
And with Caroline saying seniors' last day is next Friday, we're anxious and we're pushing through and it's good. And with sports coming up, some playoffs, it's super cool. The Boys Lacrosse is playing playoffs right now, Girls Lacrosse, like, won their first SEC title this year, and Boys Volleyball is doing amazingly, amazing, which is super cool. And I just want to say thank you to all the mothers, and Happy Mother's Day from this past Sunday, because that was super fun, I think.
So, kind of short, but just want to congratulate all the seniors, as, yes, like Mateo just said, the, another week or so school, and they'll, they'll be out, so that's great. And then prom coming up this weekend, I think that's exciting for everybody, it's kind of, it's moved off campus this year, so that's kind of fun. And just hope all the kids make good decisions and have fun. Be safe.
All right, love that, so, thanks. I want to acknowledge this past week was Teacher Appreciation Week, but I really think it's Staff Appreciation Week, and I want to acknowledge all the people that are incredible staff members for our school district, and the things you do for kids, and, and all of that, so thank you for that. And then I, I would be remiss if I didn't say how much, and how much joy I experienced earlier. I always love the student showcase, it's my, definitely my favorite part of the meeting, but I am so grateful and thankful for any person who is a part of our admin teams, part of our, whatever, whatever teams were, were to, that we recognized more kids tonight. And, and those kids felt good about, you know, being woman hockey players, right? And like, I was just so excited about that, so I want to say how grateful and thankful I am, and how much I think that's great for kids. And, and that's what we should be doing here, right, is kids, 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 and so thank you so much. And Washtenaw United, I'm excited for you, and you, you deserve those letters and congratulations.
I was just gonna say, some, echo some of the same things. Congratulations to the seniors. I know that, I think you said nine days, but I've heard a rumor that it might only be, mm, I don't know. If you're traveling to the region of Ohio, near Lake Erie, I wish you safe travels next week. Congratulations to the juniors for the hard work that they've put on for prom, and I know that the seniors are gonna enjoy that after last year, they did a lot of work to put on a prom last year. I also want to just echo what Brad said about staff appreciation, and again, Celine celebrates staffle, staff appreciation like none other. I was reflecting on that, and it's just, it's one week, it's nice to be recognized if you're thinking of teachers during the other weeks of the year, or staff. I was recently at a lacrosse game, and the players got to pick a staff member to recognize, and one of the lacrosse players, Donovan Gillow, recognized the support and the just gratitude that he has for one of the women who works in the cafeteria. And so I think sometimes we think about teachers, because it's called Teacher Appreciation Week, but it really is about the staff and the whole community, and how they pour into those kids. I guess in other senior news, I don't know, I've been getting, like, water balloon remnants on my driveway, I don't know, water balloon remnants? I don't know, something about that, but seniors, thanks for your leadership, thanks for, thanks for your time here in Celine, and I know you're gonna wrap up these next two weeks with fun, and, and make sure that you get those classes done. Good luck.
I'd briefly forgotten, if you're going, don't forget Compass Night on Thursday night, if you're able to make it, I hope to see some of you there. Thank you.
Okay, so, well, maybe I'll, there's a, a couple of things. So the DEIAC meeting is this week, and also the Sex Ed Advisory Board meeting, so I didn't want to take anything from that, but there, I think, the CAB is close to hopefully choosing this week one of the curriculums that they will be recommended, recommending, so information will come later regarding that. And then, so this week, I don't know if other elementary schools are doing field day, either this week, or probably soon in the future, and I'm helping out with that, to support the little ones. And so, and also, yes, with the, the FFA, I was able to purchase some of their beautiful flowers, so that was nice to have over Mother's Day weekend, so got to enjoy those, so thanks for, for doing that. And then, I guess lastly, I, so, so this is just kind of another request for a future agenda item, I just want to make sure that I ask publicly, I will be sending an email, so information on, to the board, sending information only on SAS board policies regarding administrative guidelines and forms as an extension of board policies. We currently do not have any that are public, as other districts do. I know the WISD has public Niola guidelines out there, you know, so it, there's no reason that it shouldn't be accessible to board members, to staff, and students, and family. And so, you know, that, I'll send policy information on that, and also possibly request that, you know, if, if we're not making it public, maybe it should come as an action item here at the board to request that that information be public. We want to make sure that there are consistent forms and guidelines that are related specifically to our policies, specifically to law, make sure that, you know, families aren't getting different things, and we want to make sure that things are grammatically correct, and, you know, in line with, with policies. And so, I just wanted to, to bring that up as information that I will be sending, because that has come up for years now, and so I, I just wanted to, to make sure that we are aligned on that. Thanks.
Excuse me a second, since you're using the board update policy, time for this, will you be running that discussion?
Sure.
Okay.
I want to make sure that anything that I ask isn't via email only, because I don't want a thousand questions, right, to come back, I want to make sure that, that, that's something I am requesting.
So, I was also going to wish the moms in the community a happy belated Mother's Day, as the first teachers of our kids, and in addition, wanted to highlight Teacher Appreciation Week last week, and a special measure of gratitude to our retiring teachers. I see that there are always a few teachers retiring in our board updates, and just, you know, it was really nice having the presentation last time, and I saw some familiar names on the list this time, and I won't go calling people out, because I don't want to miss anyone, but I'd like to thank those teachers who are retiring at the end of the school year. And a shout out to our students who are in their last month of school. We often highlight kids' accomplishments here, but I know for some of the kids out there, in case anybody's still listening, the end of the year can bring up a lot of stress and difficulty, and for some of you, just getting up in the morning and getting to school every day has been hard, and May is a lot, and so a shout out to all the families who are getting their kids out during what can be challenging last months, and the kids for hanging in there, and be safe and careful, and have a great time at prom, everybody.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda, the agenda listed in this agenda will not be read aloud. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion, unless a board member requests that anyone or all be considered individually. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the consent agenda as printed.
So move.
Would that be Tim Austin?
Support.
Would that be Susan Eastep? Or Lauren Gold? I couldn't hear.
Support, Eastep.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A vote? Six, oh, thank you. Items on the next agenda, Dr. Latch?
Our primary scheduled report's gonna be the District Strategic Council Update.
Nice, thank you very much. There's no public comment, I believe? So, our next board meeting will be held on May 28 at 6:30, and I'd like to entertain, and I'll do it this way tonight, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this regular Board of Education meeting in May 14, 2024, at 9:28.
Motion, Gerby.
Gerby. Gold, Gerby and Gold, the two Gs, thank you very much, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, a vote? Great. See you next, in two weeks.